Good afternoon again. The time now is 5:32 on May 14, 2025. I would like to call for their meeting to the order for the closed session. And so, Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you. Mayor Winn?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I'm here.
Councilwoman District One, Van West. Councilmember District Three, Winn?
Here.
Councilmember District Four, Winn?
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with District One, Councilwoman Van West absent.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to open up for the oral communication for closed session only, please. So, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call for it. Is there any speaker signed up for that?
Yes, Mayor. We have one speaker, Terry Reins.
Hello. No prepared comments, but another case of potential litigation. It's become a semi-full-time job for me just to follow all of the court cases related to the city of Westminster. Some of them relate to our actual council members, other ones relate to liability, even one in L.A. County. It's getting very expensive to purchase all these documents, but it's the only way that the public knows what's going on with all this litigation. We've had some huge lawsuits and/or claims filed against the city, some 25 million, 10 million, whatever, wrongful death. I mean, there's a lot of serious cases. When we're looking at the budget, we need to maybe reconsider our approach to lawsuits as far as, you know, going the long haul and paying all those attorney fees versus settling something that is maybe it's gray, but I think some... I hate doing that because justice should be served, and I don't ever want to admit fault when there isn't any. But some of the cases I've looked at, there's reason for concern, and we don't want to go five years and 5 million to fight something that maybe we don't have a good chance of fighting. But I would like to ask that, again, now that we have a different city attorney for now, you know, if there are ever facts and circumstances that are known to the possible plaintiff in any of these cases, that you disclose that because you can consider me a standing request for that information. We do it, but we do it not consistently with the known part. It has to be that the party knows that it's a possible lawsuit, one way or the other. So I would just like to see more transparency to the public about these lawsuits. We all remember the Baker one from many, many years ago, and I feel like sometimes we're building back up to just millions of dollars. If we had competent council members that weren't costing us tens of thousands of dollars for a case right now, you know, that would help if we just had our own council members that were not committing crimes or doing other activities that cause litigation. But I would just ask you all to please, when you're in closed sessions, think about your constituents. Think about the money. Think about how the public is perceiving Westminster with all these lawsuits because I... Again, it seems to be growing. Maybe it's just me, maybe I'm getting into it. I mean, I spent almost $300 on court documents over a six-week period, and that's just the ones directly related to the cases that are before you. So anyway, thank you so much and good luck.
Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, would you please, Madam Clerk, and you read the items that we will go into recess for closed session?
The City Council recessed to a closed session for the following purpose: Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation; Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Section 5495-6.9D2 (1) case.
All right. Thank you very much. The City Council now recessed for closed session, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock for open session.
Good evening. The time now is 6:04 on May 14, 2025. I would like to start the City Council meeting, a meeting called to order. So, Madam Clerk, would you please take the real call?
Mayor Nguyen?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
I'm here.
District One, Councilwoman Van West. District Three, Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
District Four, Councilmember Nguyen?
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with District One, Councilwoman Van West absent.
All right, thank you very much. It looks like we have almost got a full house today. And it's a good day for the city of Westminster, right? To see all of you here. On behalf of the City Council and city staff, we would like to welcome each and everyone to the meeting. And at this time here, I would like to invite you to stand up for the salute to the flag, and this will be by Vice Mayor Manzo, and then the invocation is going to be Councilmember Mark Mokhwin.
Right. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance and directions as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decisions made here be to the benefit of all citizens of Westminster. Amen.
All right, thank you. Please be seated. I want to thank you to Vice Mayor Manzo and also District Three Councilmember Mark Nguyen for the salute to the flag and invocation. And at this time, let us move on to the city attorney, closed session report, please.
Yes, we did meet in closed session, and there was one item that was discussed, the matter on the agenda relating to potential litigation. There was nothing, no reportable action taken.
All right, thank you. Is there any export communication from Medias?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, so moving on to the city clerk report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. There is a late communication memo in front of you for agenda items 3.1, 3.12, and 5.1 for tonight's consideration. Additionally, there is an unscheduled vacancy that has occurred on our Cultural Arts Commission. Appointments are due to my office no later than May 30 at 5:00 p.m. Applications are available online and at City Hall. Consideration will be taken place at the June 11 meeting. For any additional information, please contact my office, and we're happy to assist. Other than that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. And next is city manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, and everyone watching tonight. First, I just want to highlight that last week, May 4 through the 10, among other weeks, was Public Service Recognition Week. And this week's a time to honor and thank the public servants who work at all levels of government. This week, we are observing National Police Week, which is also a time to honor and recognize the selfless and heroic service of the members of the Westminster Police Department and those in law enforcement. The city of Westminster depends on our law enforcement officers and professional staff to keep our neighborhoods safe, enforce our laws, and respond effectively in times of crisis. We encourage all citizens to join us in commemorating both current and former law enforcement officers through their decayed service and invaluable contributions to upholding justice, enforcing the rule of law, protecting the innocent. They have earned a distinguished and lasting reputation for safeguarding the rights and security of all citizens. The Westminster Police Officers Association, in collaboration with the Westminster P.D., has created a green patch to recognize the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And we use this, we use green to signify new life, growth, and beginnings. The Westminster Police Department's personnel can wear green patches in May to help raise public awareness of mental health issues and to acknowledge the historic tragic loss of two of our officers to suicide. In conjunction with the green patches, a wall within the police department has been dedicated to this cause and to the officers whose lives were ended by suicide. The Westminster Police Department has partnered with Bud's Odyssey Foundation to raise funds by selling this green patch. If you're interested in purchasing one, go to budsoodisyfoundation.com and email them requesting a patch. And we have some exciting events coming up at the Senior Center on Wednesday, May 21st. That's next Wednesday, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. They will be hosting a prom dance, so senior prom. This promises to be a delightful afternoon of music and dancing with live entertainment by the Five Star Band. Pre-sale tickets are available at the Senior Center front desk for $5, and a day of the event, $7. On June 11th, they'll be hosting a Father's Day luncheon from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the fathers and father figures in our community. Entertainment will be provided by George Rossi, and tickets are $5 and are currently available at the Senior Center. Seating is limited, so early purchase is encouraged. On Friday, June 13th, at 10 a.m., we'll be honoring Flag Day, so please come out to honor the Stars and Stripes and celebrate the spirit of unity, freedom, and pride that our flag represents. The event is free to attend, but registration is required, so make sure to sign up today before the spots run out. For more information on any of these events, please visit the Senior Center front desk or call 714-895-2878. You can also visit the city's website for more information. The Sigler Park Splash Pad will be opening for the season on Memorial Day weekend. This popular amenity will be open weekends from May 24th to June 8th, and then daily from June 14th through September 1st. The splash pad can be reserved for private parties as well between the hours of 10 a.m. and 12 p.m. So for more information in reserving the splash pad, contact Community Services at 714-895-2860, or via email at csronline@westminster-ca.gov. And just to report a little bit on code enforcement. All code enforcement officers met their initial challenge to initiate 40 code enforcement cases in the month of April. We had heard that the members of the community and this council would like to prioritize code enforcement efforts, so we'd like to congratulate the team on doing that. The city is also going to be hosting a countywide workshop on illegal sidewalk vending on May 21st. A noted land use attorney will be speaking, and representatives from various cities will be sharing strategies that have been effective in dealing with this issue. This coming Saturday, the Public Works Department will be hosting its fourth annual Public Works Open House, which will take place over at the Corp Yard. That's located at 14381 Olive Street. That's this Saturday, May 17th, from 10 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's a free, family-friendly event. We'll have food, drinks, demonstrations, photo ops, activities, music, community booths, and a lot more. On Thursday, June 5th, we're excited to host civic leaders, entrepreneurs, and community partners from across Southern California for 50 Years of Little Saigon's Resilience, a milestone event honoring the strength, innovation, and legacy of the Vietnamese-American community. This is hosted by the Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce and the Orange County Inland Empire Small Business Development Center Network in partnership with the cities of Garden Grove, Westminster, Fountain Valley, and Santa Ana. This special gathering will reflect on five decades of progress and pave the way for future generations. The program will highlight two themes, from Refugee to Legacy, which is celebrating the pioneering spirit of first-generation Vietnamese refugees, and then Legacy and Beyond, empowering the next generation of leaders through shared stories, mentorship, and vision. Admission is free, but pre-registration is required, so you can scan that QR code, and this information is also available on the city's website. And last but not least, we're excited to announce the official kickoff of the Level Up Small Business Grant Program. Twenty small businesses from Westminster have been selected to participate in this dynamic cohort over the next four weeks. These entrepreneurs will engage in a series of intensive workshops and hands-on sessions focused on critical business development topics, including marketing strategies and outreach. Westminster small businesses are also invited to apply for the Tech for Accessibility, Cybersecurity, and Workforce Development Reimbursement Grant. This grant helps cover costs for things like cybersecurity improvements, accessibility tools and upgrades, and employee training and development. Funds are limited, so apply early, and application period will close when the funds are exhausted. This information is also available on the city's website. That includes my report for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, City Manager. And as you can see, there are a number of activities for you, upcoming activities for you, and I invite each and every one of you to attend the event. There were a lot of effort that city staff have to put up for this event, for this event. So don't take it lightly. And one of the event that I would like to specifically invite you, which is this coming Saturday, May 17, from 10 to 2:00 p.m., which is at the Public Yard, right at Olive and, what is it? Olive and...
Maple.
Maple, yes. So please attend the event, and you know, it's fun. This is the third year, I believe, that Public Works, fourth year, that Public Works put up this event to welcome you, and at the same time, there are many different government agencies there also ready to answer your question if there is any. So again, thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, that today is a good day for the city of Westminster, a nice day, you know, nice weather, but it's a good day that we have a number of you show up. It is a good meeting night, but I would like to see each and every one of you, every time that we have, whether it's good or bad, City Council meeting, I would like to have all you here so that we can share the opinions, we can, you know, work for the city, to move up the city. So with that, today, we have, due to the number of recognitions we have tonight, I am requesting that we take the presentation out of order. We will start with the presentation, Special Presentation Item A, followed by the Special Presentation Item C, D, and E, with Special Presentation Item B coming last. And you know why the Item B is coming last? Because there are many, many business owners here that we are going to recognize today. So first, I would like to go with a certificate of recognition to Abby for her bravery regarding recent 911 call. First, we are honored to recognize Abby for her bravery and quick thinking. On April 4th, Abby called 911 to report a break in at her home, providing important information to our dispatchers as her father fought off the intruders. You can see she's there. Thanks to Abby's calmness, our officials were able to respond quickly and detain those suspects. Her quick actions helped protect her family and support our police response. On behalf of the entire city council and city staff, I will be presenting a certificate of recognition to Abby for showing remarkable bravery and successfully communicating with the 911 operator during the chaotic turn. So at this time, I would like to ask the city council to join me at the podium and to present the award to recognize Abby for her bravery.
And Mayor, as you prepare for your picture, I also want to point out that the dispatcher that took the call is here. Kristin?
All right. Will you please come up here and join us? Well, before I present the certificate of recognition, do you have anything to say?
Abby, you truly are brave, and not very often do we get children that call, and when they do, I really hope they're just like you. What you did that day, that morning, absolutely helped me get my officers to you and to help catch that bad guy. So I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our heart, and everybody in dispatch and on behalf of the Westminster Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you to you also. So on behalf of the city council and city staff, I would like to present this certificate of recognition to present it to Abby for exhibiting remarkable composure and effectively communicating with the 911 operator, which is right here, during the chaotic and violent situation. So just present it to you on the 14th day of May 2025, which is today, and signed by me, the T. Chalengwen, the mayor, and also the vice mayor, Carlos Manzo, and Amy Van West for Councilmember District One, Mark Nguyen, Councilmember District Three, and Nam Quan Nguyen, Councilmember of District Four. Congratulations, and thank you. The reason that we have to present it to her first because she has school tomorrow, so she can sit free to leave. Next is a presentation, Proclamation to Public Works Department for National Public Works Week. So 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, and they are going to have the Open House on this Saturday, on May 17. The city of Westminster proudly celebrates this week with the Fourth Annual Public Works Open House Event, which takes place on May 17, 2025, from 10 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Westminster Corporation Yard. On behalf of the entire city council, we will be presenting a proclamation to Public Works Department proclaiming the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as the National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join us in celebrating public works professionals and recognizing their vital contribution to our health, safety, and quality of life. I will be reading another two, and then we'll ask the council to join me at the podium. Next one is presentation, a proclamation to the city clerks Department for Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, that you. 2025 is the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, recognizing the city clerk's office as a professional link between resident... as a professional link between resident local officials and different levels of government agency by serving as the main hub between the local government and community. On behalf of the entire city council, we will be presenting a proclamation to city clerks' office, proclaiming the week of May fourth through May ten, twenty twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. My super level. And further extend our appreciation to our city clerks department. So the third one is the, next, is the presentation of proclamation for Older Americans Month. May is Older American Month with this year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, encouraging us to rethinking aging. The city of Westminster remains committed to providing the resources and support that older adults need to stay active and connected in our community. Again, on behalf of the entire city council, we will be presenting a proclamation to our senior center staff, proclaiming May twenty twenty-five as Older Americans Month and encourage all residents to join us in recognizing the contribution of our other citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. At this time, I would like to ask the city council to join me at the podium to present the proclamation to those we just mentioned. Thank you. I just read proclamation already, so I'm not going to read it again. So this proclamation is going to present it to National Public Works Week, so from May eighteen to twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And it's signed by city of Westminster, Mayor T. Chalenguen, Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, Amy Van Westfor, council member District One, Mark Nguyen, council member District Three, and Nam Quan Nguyen, council member District Four. So, well, oh, there you are. All right. So put your hand together and congratulations. Thank you very much. You have anything to say?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Quan Pham. I'm the Public Works Manager. And on behalf of the team, I just want to thank you for this proclamation. I also want to thank you for your continued support of the department while we proudly serve this wonderful community. And also want to thank our men and women of this department for the hard work and dedication. And last but not least, I know it's mentioned a few times, I welcome the council and also the community to our Fourth Annual Public Works Open House, which is this Saturday. And it's going to be at Corporation Yard. The address is one four three eight one Olive Street. And I look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Give them a, the big hands. Thank you. Thank you. Next is proclamation, the fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So here you are. You can, all right. Thank you. How many of you? All right. Five. Okay. Why don't we spread them? So this is the proclamation, fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week from May four to May ten, twenty twenty-five. So we'd like to, on behalf of the city council and city staff, present it to your office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and city council and community. I do want to take a moment to recognize my staff here. We have Stephanie, Tanya, Ashley, and Daisy. Without these professionals in my office, I would not be able to do half the things I do as their city clerk. So I am honored to have them on my team. And thank you for the support of our council and city staff for everything we're doing. Thank you again.
The next one is the proclamation for Older Americans Month. And this is from May twenty twenty-five. So thank you. Thank you for being here. So same thing, we are, this is signed by me, the T. Chalenguen, the mayor, and Carlos Menzo, Vice Mayor, Amy Van Westfor, council member District One, Mark Nguyen, council member District Three, and Nam Quan Nguyen, council member District Four. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. We appreciate your support and all the efforts that our senior center offers to our aging community. This is Heather Dodd, our senior services supervisor. We're so happy to have her on board, and what she's bringing to our senior center is really impressive. Thank you, Heather. Thank you to your staff. Do you want to have a few words?
I'd like to say thank you to the council and council members for recognizing May's Older Americans Month and for the dedication you provide to our residents. We're very fortunate to have wonderful services and social support programs for our older adults, things such as congregant meals, home-delivered meals, transportation for nutrition, engagement for social connections with their peers. We have wonderful things planned for this month, so anybody that wants to stop on by and have some fun, there's always something happening at the senior center. Like you saw, we have our senior prom. We have karaoke bingo next week and lots of fun activities. So stop on by and say hi. And everybody's welcome at our senior center to age and enjoy and embrace their elder years.
Thank you. Lots of activities during the week at senior center, so make sure you stop by. Last but not least, the recognition of twenty twenty-five Small Business Month Honors. On April ten, twenty twenty-four, the city council adopted and approved Resolution Number five-two-five-three, annually recognizing May as a Small Business Month and establishing a citywide annual Small Business of the Year recognition program. This is our second year, and I am proud to announce that we have received a total number of eleven nominees for our small business that make positive and profound impacts in our community. Each nomination was reviewed and considered by the entire city council. And each member of the city council selected one nomination to honor tonight. So at this time here, let me go first as I have selected Michael's Spot Pub and Grill. That's the honor by Mayor Nguyen, which is me. Just want to let you know that last month, I was invited to the twenty-fifth celebration of the anniversary of Michael's Pub and Grill. And I was there with Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo and also council member Mark Nguyen. I was very impressed of the event they've put together. And I know the people put it together too, so she's here today. And, you know, with the nomination that I have received in hand, that there are nine different nominees, nominators, to nominate Michael's Pups and Grill for this event, Business of the Year. So I am very, very honored to select Michael's Spot Pub and Grill as a Business of the Month for the May of twenty twenty-five. So I am proud to recognize Michael's Spot Pub and Grill as a twenty twenty-five Small Business Month Honoree. For twenty-five years, Michael's has been more than just a restaurant. It has been a place where friends, families, and neighbors come together with a warm sense of community, amazing hot wings, great food, and incredible staff. Michael's has truly become a staple here in the city of Westminster. It's a place where connections are made, celebrations happens, and everyone feels welcome. Thank you, Michael's Spot Pub and Grill, for twenty-fifth years of bringing people together and for being such a valued part of our community. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition and congratulations for the twenty-fifth anniversary. Next, I would like to ask the Vice Mayor, Carlos Menzo, for your Honoree.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Michael and your team, Brenda, all of you. Michael's well-deserved. I had the honor to select the Posse Bar. The Posse Bar, you know, from that, from that business, they were able to create an extension arm, a philanthropic arm of their contribution to our community. So I want to recognize them for their extraordinary commitment and all the charitable work in our community. Westminster residents and, excuse me, Westminster resident and former law enforcement officer, John Gentile, brought this business, bought this business about twelve years ago, cleaned it up, and changed the name to the Posse Bar. Since then, the Posse Bar has not only established itself as a beloved local business, but also has also dedicated significant resources and efforts to improve the lives of those in need within our community. They created the Posse Bar Foundation a few years ago. Since its inception, the foundation has hosted two hundred and fifty-two fundraisers, raising over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to benefit seventy-five local organizations. Much of the foundation's charity work directly benefits local law enforcement, veterans, and children with special needs. Most notably, last year, the Posse Bar and its foundation raised eight thousand dollars to provide our Westminster Police Department with a therapy dog, canine dog named Thor, which we all have known, grown to love. The Posse Bar Foundation also provides holiday meals to those less fortunate in our community each year at Thanksgiving and Christmas. The Posse Bar and the foundation have built a legacy of care and compassion, showing that small businesses can be powerful agents of good, of good social, good social good, to do social good. Through these efforts, they have brought together people from all walks of life, uniting our community and providing that business success does not solely tie its profits, but in a positive impact accompanied to those all around it. So thank you very much, the Posse Bar family, for all you do for our community. And it's our privilege, we're lucky to have you here. So thank you very much.
Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Mark Nguyen for District Three.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor to recognize A&amp;D Auto Center as the twenty-twenty-fifth Small Business Month Honoree. For over thirty years, A&amp;D Auto has been a trusted name in automotive service, known for high-quality repairs, affordable prices, and outstanding customer care. Their commitment goes far beyond the garage. A&amp;D Auto Center has played a key role in local job creation by employing skilled technicians and support staff from our community, helping to strengthen Westminster workforce and economy. They have also contributed to revitalizing Little Saigon, transforming a once underutilized commercial space into a thriving auto service center that draws foot traffic and supports the area's cultural and economic vibrancy. A&amp;D Auto Center is a true example of how small businesses drive local progress. We are very proud to recognize their dedication and impact with this twenty twenty-five Small Business Month Honor. Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen for District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to recognize Westminster Chickfilet as the twenty-twenty-fifth Small Business Honoree. Known for serving quality meals with exceptional hospitality, this business stands out not just for what's on the menu, but for the values it serves every day. Under the leadership of a dedicated owner, Westminster Chickfilet has created a welcoming environment that promotes care, supports team, supports team member growth, and delivers outstanding customer service. They have built meaningful partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, Westminster Arts Academy, Westminster Police Department, the Westminster State Parade, and Coastline Community College, demonstrating a deep investment in our community's success. Thank you, Westminster Chickfilet, for your continued dedication to make a positive difference. Congratulations on the well-deserved recognition. Thank you. I received a letter from Mr. Black Wargamoth saying that he is not going to be here to accept the plaque nomination. So I'm going to read his very short letter. Dear Councilman Nguyen, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks for nominating Chickfilet Beach Boulevard for Small Business of the Year. It's truly an honor, and we are incredibly grateful for recognition and support. I regret that I was unable to attend the event today to personally accept the award. Please accept my sincere apology for missing such a special occasion. I would love the opportunity to connect with you over lunch sometime soon. Okay, sometime, okay, like that. Both to personally thank you and to get to know you better. Okay. So that's his letter.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen. As you can see, that Councilmember Amy Van West is not here today, she couldn't make it. But she represents District One. She also elect Westminster Roastery Outlet as her Honoree. So I will be doing on her behalf. On behalf of the Councilmember Amy Van West, I am proud to recognize Westminster Roastery Outlet as a twenty twenty-five Small Business Month Honoree. With their unbeatable prices, outstanding customer service, and neighborhood market feel, they have become a beloved part of our community. Beyond serving shoppers, they give back in many ways, like supporting local organizations such as OC, DAH, Shore Elementary, PTA, Westminster High Robotics, and our senior center. They also invest in youth by hosting students interns from school in Westminster, Huntington Beach, Anaheim. In the past six months, they have celebrated three major contest winners and regularly engage young customers with fun activities like coloring contests. We thank Westminster. We thank Westminster Grocery Outlet for their continued commitment to our community and congratulate them on this well-deserved recognition. Let's put our hands together to thank them. So at this time, I would like to invite the council members to join me at the podium to hand out the recognition to all those Honorees. Well, first and foremost is from the mayor. The certificate of recognition presented to Michael's Spots Pups and Grill for 2025 Small Business of the Year. Please come up. Congratulations. So on behalf of the city staff as well as the city council, we would like to present this one to you in celebration of Small Business Month and in recognition of your commitment and contribution to enhancing the business vitality of the Westminster community. So why don't you have a few words to introduce your members?
I'm thankful and honored to be here 25 years in the city of Westminster, and I couldn't do it alone without my friends and partners, Brenda Coleman, and this is Rahul DeCosta. Again, I'd like to thank, thank everyone.
Thank you very much. Again, congratulations to Michael's Spots Pups and Grill. It's right on Golden West and near Borabosa. So, you know, stop by whenever you can. Next is the certificate of recognition presented to Posse Bar. Would you please come up here, Mr. John Gentile, for 2025 Small Business of the Year? I know that he is very much involved with our community, and thank you for being here with us today. And let me read that for you. Again, in celebration of Small Business Month and recognition of your commitment and contribution to Business of the City of Westminster. Thank you.
Just for the record, Maribel does not work in the barge. She does work for the foundation. I don't want anybody getting the wrong idea, but thank you guys very much. Terry, thank you very much for putting my name in. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Carlos. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
The council also elected. All right, thank you. The next one is certificate of recognition presented to Westminster Grocery Outlet. I don't think that he's here today. Oh, he's here. Well, the representative, I think, for 2025 Small Business of the Year in celebration of Small Business Month and recognition of your commitment and contribution to the Business of City of Westminster community.
Really appreciate this, Mayor, council members. We appreciate all the support from the city. We're the grocery outlet on Golden West, McFadden. We're in the same complex as Michael's. There's other grocery outlets, but we appreciate you guys supporting us because we like supporting the city. We appreciate the Westminster Police Department and the Fire Department for helping us keep everything safe. And we appreciate you guys, so thank you.
The next one is the certificate of recognition presented to A&amp;D Auto Center for 2025 Small Business of the Year. Please come forward. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor, White Mayor, and all the city members and all the police department of Westminster. It's honor to live in Westminster and doing business here, and we always wish Westminster going to be great and great city in the whole United States. Thank you.
Last but not least, this certificate of recognition presented to Westminster Chick-fil-A. Oh, they're not here, okay. For 2025 Small Business of the Year, and they are not here as Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen just mentioned. Oh, they're here. Oh, would you please, would you please come? Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A, okay, all right. I'm glad that we are here, okay. My apologies, all right. Okay, here, congratulations. You want to say something?
Sure, yeah, we're very happy and very honored to receive this recognition, and we love being in the city of Westminster and serving our guests every day. Thank you so much.
Well, before we depart, why don't we ask every one of you at the Honoree today, would you please come up? And so we have the picture of everybody. This is not in the program, but I created. We are in the business community though, so. Thank you very much. Put your hand together to thank them all. Congratulations to all. At this time, I would like to take a 10-minute recess. So we have cake, staff prepared cakes and drinks for us. So feel free to enjoy and, you know, socialize with each other. So thank you very much. We have 10 minutes to recess.
Thank you.
The time now is 7:04. I would like to continue our city council meeting. This time, would you please take the roll call?
Thank you. Mayor Nguyen?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Here.
Councilwoman Van West, District 1, is absent, and we have District 3, Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
District 4, Councilmember Nguyen?
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Continue with the city council meeting. This time, I would like to open up for oral communication concerning agenda items only. So if you have anything with agenda item, this is the time. So, Madam Clerk, could you please go ahead and read the instruction into the record?
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda except public hearing items. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step up to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. First speaker we have is John Gentile, followed by Jay Van Arsdale.
Hello, City Council, Mayor, city staff. I am a former member of the Westminster Community Foundation. Therefore, I am not here to speak on behalf of the foundation. I am only here to provide my opinion as a concerned citizen with the knowledge of the issues that led to the collapse of the board. This is my opinion and may not reflect the views of the other board members. Number one, it appears that more than half the foundation members were unfamiliar with the requirements for working on a foundation, therefore contributing very little to its success. Number two, there was a lack of guidance and leadership. Even after months of attending meetings, we discussed the same agenda items repeatedly. Other than the gala that the mayor was nice enough to assist us with, no foundations were conducted despite its members offering to do all the work. Until Kamla joined the foundation, we were unable or unaware of the extent of the foundation's difficulties which still exists today. Because of the bylaws, the city council restricted the board from making important decisions. Therefore, I propose that the mayor, Nguyen establishes and directs the new Westminster Ted Parade Foundation independently without city involvement or use an official title to attract donors or sponsors. Mayor, your dedication to the Vietnamese community and your ability to enhance cultural pride are commendable. Therefore, I offer you my assistance at the next gala. If the council decides to retain the new Westminster Community Foundation, it should operate separately from the city council and therefore benefit the whole city and not just a single parade at taxpayers' expense. Since I am limited to only three minutes available to answer further questions from the council after this meeting, thank you very much.
I want to thank you and at the same time, congratulations. And I want to thank, on behalf of the city council, I want to thank that your donation to the KNI for the police department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker is Jay Van Arsdale, followed by Terry Rains.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jay Van Arsdale, 13722 Milton Avenue in Westminster. I come before you to urge you to pass item number 7.1. Our tow rates has not increased for 10 or 11 years. It's really difficult to take on these new challenges as far as state regulations, buying new equipment, and keeping them on the road. Insurance has gone up. Tow trucks used to cost between $70,000 and $80,000. Now they're like $180,000. Some of our big rigs are over $500,000 and $600,000. So we need an increase just to kind of stay with everything that's going up. And these rates are paid by the individual that owns the vehicles. There's no cost to the city for these rates. It's just a matter of trying to cover our costs and give these employees a good wage because they're on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So they need to be compensated as well. So I appreciate you passing this and helping us stay afloat. Thank you very much.
Final speaker is Terry Rains.
Hello. Congratulations to our five small businesses, Public Works, and city clerk staff, and us older Americans being honored tonight. I proudly nominated John Gentile's posse bar and foundation jointly, but only the foundation was recognized. I sent 15 emails with errors, omissions, and concerns about items 3.1, 3.2, 3.4, 3.12, 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3. I always email staff in the city attorney's office, but with so few responses and little improvement, I may start copying the entire council if that helps, so you're welcome. 3.5, does the applicant know that June 14th is U.S. Flag Day and the birthdate of the U.S. Army? 3.11, Amy arrived late to the strategic plan meeting during the Pledge of Allegiance and refused to remove her baseball cap for it, left the dais a few times, then left entirely one half hour early. Nam Quan arrived even later, stayed about an hour, then left the dais at 6:37 PM and never came back, missing three and a half hours. Why? To go live at 7:00 PM on his YouTube channel with Nokki for four hours of nonsense about communist Vietnam and a monk. A formal complaint is forthcoming. 3.12, added to the Juneteenth proclamation, it's a federal holiday since 2021 and is observed as an official holiday or observed in every state. Removed Day of Remembrance for Americans from the Arvin Proclamation, June 19th is Arvin Veterans, March 29th is American Vietnam War Veterans, so you're welcome. 5.1, fix the DSO gas gallon discount to be 0.628 cents, not 6.28 cents. You're welcome. 5.2, stop using stentary, old, archaic sexist obsolete contract language. Know all men by those present isn't even the correct Latin phrase. It's know all men by these presents, meaning let all men know by these documents here presented. We have a female city manager, for God's sake, so let's join every city in the current century. 5.3, errors of ordinances, modify code, not other ordinances. Ordinances are adopted, codes are amended. This ordinance style is conflicting and outdated, copied from one 35 years old. No response, but you're welcome. 7.1, the far-right column, county average is only four city plus the much higher OC sheriff and CHP average, not a county average. Fountain Valley is shown but excluded from the average. Why? Rates too low? More Orange County cities should have been included, and OC sheriff and CHP should have been removed for the true comps. 9.1, 9.2, warrant a study session. City Attorney Porter, you state only currently, there's currently two members of the WCF Board, but per bylaw 302, the two whose terms expired in January can still serve until they are replaced. With your interpretation of state law, three meets, three of three meets a quorum. No mention of noncompliance with filings, fiscal year 23 postcard, fiscal year 24 longer form not filed past due, fiscal year 25 due soon, the raffle permit, the SI due later this month. No mention of glaring errors in the bylaws created by your predecessor council. You must fix what you broke, WCF, much easier and cheaper than creating WTF, and that would only serve one segment of our population. So fix it or forget it.
That concludes our speakers, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and expressing your opinions concerning the agenda items. At this time, I would like to move to consent calendars. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion. I would like to pull items 3.9, 3.10, and 3.11 for further details so that our resident can understand more about the situation. Is there any others?
Yeah, Mayor, and I would like to pull item 3.6.
3.6. All right. Any others? If not, I move to approve the rest of them except for 3.6, 3.9, 3.10, and 3.11.
2.
Motion is taken on the floor.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo. This is to approve the consent calendars with agenda items numbers 3.6, 3.9, 3.10, and 3.11 pulled for separate discussion. I'll go ahead and call roll. District 3, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
So 3.6 being approved by Vice Mayor Manzo. So resolution declaring intent to accept Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, Competitive Grant Award from Sustainable Communities Program, Active Transportation and Safety for Citywide Safe Routes to School Quick Build Projects. Vice Mayor Manzo, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to have our staff do a quick presentation of this, on this grant award. I think it's really important for our community to know what's going on in our city and the work that our staff has been doing for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll get started with a little bit of background. I have been known to say in public that we don't celebrate our victories as much as we should as a city, and there are in fact a lot of victories that happen on a daily basis. The story with this one, before I turn it over to management analyst Veronica Johnson to talk about the details, I did want to provide some background information. As I've stated before, and you just recently went through a budget presentation, everything nice that we bring to the community is literally usually grant funded, right? We got Mendez Park, we got Hoover Trail, we have a lot of other improvements that are all 100% grant funded. And we not only apply for grant funding for projects, we apply for grant funding for studies. And I know it takes a little bit of time. Two years ago, we kicked off our Safe Routes to School effort at a middle school here in Westminster, and that effort in itself was a grant funded study. It was the first time that the state of California had awarded a city a citywide Safe Routes to School study. Our neighboring cities are piecing them together over many years, maybe a decade, they'll get through the whole city. We were able to get a large amount of money to do a citywide study, and our staff did an excellent job. Our police department was at every site visit, our elected officials were present, Public Works staff was present, and our community services staff, not only are they putting on the hundreds of projects that our city manager mentioned earlier, they are also, they were present supporting our study because collectively we need to come together to work with the community members to get ideas for projects that already have community consensus. It's very important. A lot of cities, I think the biggest failure from engineering departments across the country is that as technical experts, a lot of engineers will tend to design things based on what they see in a book, what they see in a presentation, what they see at a conference, but not every project's style fits the particular community. So we're really good about learning about all the possibilities, but then rightsizing these solutions to fit the community. So I'll turn this over to Veronica at this point, but essentially a grant funded study, really good effort. It was a whole year. We visited every school. And then that leads us to apply for actual real projects, projects that are going to improve the quality of life of our community members. So now I'll turn it over to Veronica as she could talk a little bit more about the grant money that's coming in. It's tied to the Safe Routes to School, and she could talk a little bit more about this particular award.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Veronica Johnson, management analyst with the Public Works Engineering Division. Just a little bit of background, I know Assistant City Manager Jose had touched on it, but in May 2024, the mayor and city council adopted the City of Westminster's Safe Routes to School Plan. The plan was developed through extensive collaboration with local school districts, teachers, parents, and students to address safety around Westminster schools and to encourage walking and biking to and from school. One of the goals of the city's Safe Routes to School Plan was to identify projects and improvements in the city that could be used to apply for grant funding to implement the infrastructure improvements recommended within the plan. One priority identified through the community feedback was safer school crossings, which including, included enhancing crosswalks, signage, and striping around schools. In September of 2024, the City of Westminster applied for the 2024 Sustainable Communities Program Active Transportation and Safety Projects through the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, for a quick build project. Quick build projects refer to a type of capital improvement that requires minimal to minor construction activities and immediately implements safety needs. The proposed project would install, modify, or refresh high-visibility school crosswalks. Those are the yellow crosswalks that look like the ladders. And update signage and striping at schools located within the city of Westminster. We are happy to announce that in December of 2024, the city received notification of an intent to award $445,000 for our project. Out of 40 applications received, 13 projects were selected for funding, and Westminster was the only city in Orange County to receive this grant funding. Hopefully, this is the first of many grant funded projects to come that get awarded out of our Safe Routes to School effort. Tonight, we are asking the mayor and city council to adopt a proposed resolution to satisfy the prerequisites to accept the SCAG Competitive Grant Award. Staff will return to the mayor and city council with a formal agreement for acceptance of grant funds at a future date.
Thank you very much. I know that there's a lot of effort that our staff, Assistant City Managers staff, putting forward to this project, and I'm very, very, very proud to hear that City of Westminster is the only one to be chosen out of that many. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we really appreciate staff's hard work on this. As you mentioned, we're always, all the nice things we do is grant funded. Question I had, realistically, if everything goes, you know, goes good according to plan, when can we start seeing something going on? These are quick, quick, quick work projects.
So they're quick build projects because they don't go through an extensive design process. So as Veronica mentioned, this, now the paperwork goes back to SCAG, and it's kind of out of our hands at that point. kind of out of our hands at that point. Ideally, we focus on these improvements to take place not during the school year, because we don't want to affect, you know, children that are actually going to school during that time. So we'll do our best to align it with the time that it's not as impactful for our crossing guards and for our schools, but really, the timeline is out of our hands at this point with SCAG. Do you have an answer for that?
Well, in speaking with SCAG, the, they look forward to giving us an agreement for the summer of this year, which we will bring back to the Man City Council. Once that gets approved, like Adolpha said, it goes back to SCAG. We do hope for a summer installation once all the schools are out, and just to reiterate that, we will be touching every school within the City of Westminster. So that is 20 schools. We have 21, but technically, we don't own the right of way for Hayden. So we do look on, we just own the curve of that, but we will be making some improvements to our right of way on that.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so are you ready to move to approve it?
Yes, I motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion is second.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Manzo, seconded by District 3 Councilmember Winn. This is to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Declaring the City's Intent to Accept a Competitive Grant Award Administered by SCAG for the Citywide Safe Routes to School Quick Build Project and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Documents to Accept the Award." I'll go ahead and call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
So now next is 3.9, being approved from the consent calendar, and City of Westminster crime statistics for first quarter comparison for 2024 and 2025. Chief. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you can see, our crime statistics that are now on the, on the monitor, most crime went down, which is good for us. I'd like to just note that all categories of violent crime declined with an overall reduction of 25%. Property crime also saw a decrease of nearly 10%. The only increases were burglary and arson. I attribute this for, to a couple of things. It's a national trend right now, crime is declining, it's declining in Orange County overall, and also our staffing levels have greatly improved during this quarter where we're showing the downward trend. Take any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Right.
Do you think, what do you attribute, like your best guess, is anything with the new law, the past in California, Prop 36, you think?
Yes, so the county right now is gathering all the statistics with Prop 36, but I absolutely do think even the threat of it for our county is out there, and it's deterring crime. And that's, that's opinion, but as a county, all the chiefs and the sheriffs, and sheriff is compiling that data, so we have somewhat of a scientific view at what it's doing.
All right, thank you.
All right, I was, I was at Sacramento for a city summit, and we were there to make sure that we have the funding for the Prop 36, as you mentioned.
Good.
So hopefully that with that request, and legislator is going to award it, and we have some funding, and we can take action on that, too.
Yes, and that, that's a good point, Mayor. Right, right now, Prop 36 does have teeth, they're able to lock people up, but it's the rehabilitation part that's unfunded by the state. So we're hoping that, you know, people like the mayor and other politicians can convince the state to fund those programs.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, I move to receive and file this item.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo, to receive and file. I'll go ahead and call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Next is 3.10, first quarter report on homeless outreach. Chief, please.
Yes, Mayor. So for the first quarter, our homeless liaison team, HLO team, has been busy out there, very busy out there, as you can see. They are making great progress, but it's the, the issues they're facing are the issues that keep giving. So, but they're, they're doing a great job. What you see on the, on the monitor is a snapshot of key data for the first quarter of 2025. If you have any questions regarding that, I'd be happy to answer that.
Can you update us about the navigation center that we're working with the other two cities? Where are we, is it a help at all?
Yes, so that, it, it does help. In fact, before the most recent grants passed case law ruling, we couldn't actually enforce sleeping in public or camping on, on public grounds unless we offered a bed at a navigation center. Since that law has passed, we don't necessarily need that, but it has helped. We filled every one of our beds, we have 22 beds, they are all full. So that's 22 people that would otherwise be sleeping on the streets that are not now in navigation center. And I would like to point out that, and it, it's just not, a lot of people think homeless just flock to where there's a bed, and that's not the case. It's very rare for us to get a homeless person to actually go into a navigation center. So when you look at that number, you would think that would have been filled the very first day it opened, and it took us close to a, a year to actually fill those, those beds. So I do want to point that out.
All right, thank you very much for the job well done, and I appreciate that, really, really appreciate it. And with that, I move to receive and file.
I'll second it. I have a couple of questions for the chief. Chief, can we, can we, can you touch on, or if you can, if you can't, then don't, you know, on the status of our park ranger program?
I could, so as you're aware, about a year ago, council approved two positions for park ranger. Since that time, we've ordered almost all of the equipment, or at least waiting for, to take possession of the equipment, and we have two job offers out.
Okay.
So I would say within a few weeks, we'll probably be training two full-time park rangers.
Okay, thank you. And then how was implementing the, the recently adopted anti-camping ordinance? Is there like game plan to, for that, or how do we proceed with that?
So right now, I think we're still working with the city attorney's office on our municipal code regarding that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Did I have the second on that?
Mm-hmm, you do.
All right, thank you.
I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo. This is to receive and file. I'll go ahead and call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Thank you very much. 3.11, City of Westminster Three-Year Strategic Plan for 2025-28 and Six-Month Objectives. I, I don't know that you know that, we just had the meeting, the special meeting about the strategic plan for the 2025 to 2028, but we actually concentrate on the six-month objectives, and at this time, I would like to ask staff to go, to give a brief summary of that, so that the residents of the City of Westminster know what, what was discussed.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Didn't have a presentation prepared, but certainly more than happy to give a review of our three-year strategic plan and our six-month objectives. So as you know, back in 2022, the city council adopted its first citywide three-year strategic plan, which we're really proud of. Some of those highlights have included being able to talk about local sales tax revenues and keeping those, you know, within our city. We completed a citywide compensation classification study. We talked about technology enhancements and ways to improve our customer service experience, and just a lot of different ideas to, really to help us toward the goal of achieving fiscal stability, providing a good customer service, efficiency, retaining and, and attracting quality employees, and, and a lot of other things that, that we identified as priorities in the last three years. So last month, a couple of weeks ago, we held our strategic plan for the second three-year, three-year cycle and identified priorities for the city. We did have Trepey Smith come out to facilitate, facilitate that process for us. And so the new three-year strategic plans, some of them will sound familiar, but we have five goals, and the first goal is achieving financial stability, and that is a carryover from the last three-year strategic plan. We've identified different objectives that are in line with how we can achieve financial stability. Our second goal is implement and support effective land use policies that encourage quality development. In our previous three-year strategic plan, we really focused on how we can look at our, our different codes, look at specific plans, look at our general plan amendment, you know, updates, and how we can essentially become a more modern and, and streamlined city when it comes to development, just being more development, development friendly. The third goal is to attract, develop, and retain well-qualified staff members. That was something that we talked about in the last three-year plan, and we continue that as well. Fourth is improve customer service delivery to the community. That's also a carryover, carryover goal, but we did identify different objectives in order to achieve that. And last, this is a new goal, enhance quality of life and beautification throughout the city, as you know. You know, appearances and first impressions are everything as people drive through our city, and we want to make sure that people who live here are enjoying their quality of life and experiencing high levels of quality of life, and we have those expectations as well. So there were some objectives that were identified in order to achieve that goal. So there are, you know, part of the staff report, and actually a lot of objectives to read through, but the objectives will be available on the website. There are six-month objectives that we'll be working on, starting with next month, you'll start to see staff reports related to some of these objectives, and these objectives will be, will be presented through October 31st of this year, which will be our first six months. But with that, it was a very, it was a very meaningful, productive conversation and discussion among the city council and staff, and so staff appreciates the direction that was provided. Strategic plans are, are very vital to the success of an agency, and it really just keeps us accountable in terms of what our priorities and goals are. So, so thank you to the council for, you know, for, for a very engaging discussion to identify those priorities.
So with that, I move to adopt a two-year, 2025 to 2028 strategic plan and the six-month strategic objectives metrics for May 1st, 2025 through October 31st, 2025. Councilmembers, you are welcome to, if you have the question you want to ask.
Okay, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Um, no, I'm good. I have a question.
And then you second it.
I second it.
All right. Motion is second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo, to adopt a three-year 2025 through 28 strategic plan and the six-month strategic objectives metrics for May 1st, 2025 through October 31st, 2025. I'll go ahead and call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Next, we will move into a public hearing, and at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please with your instruction into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing may speak in person. Speakers during public hearing comments will each have three minutes to speak on each public hearing item. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
So that lead to 4.1, public hearing, adoption of multiple, multiple plans related to allocation of federal CB, CDPG and home fund. At this time, I would like to ask for staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Michael Sun. I'm the Housing Specialist, and tonight's public hearing is regarding adoption of multiple related plans as it relates to federal funding. So what is a consolidated plan? This consolidated plan is a five-year plan. Within that plan, provides an analysis of housing and community development needs. It also serves as the five-year strategy to address those needs, and it also established general priority needs and goals that are in alignment with CDPG and home funds. Additionally, the city is also required to prepare what's called an annual action plan, which identifies specific programs and budgets for annual CDPG and home allocations. The five-year plan and annual action plan is a required document to receive community development block program funds and home funds from HUD. This is an overview of potential uses of CDPG funds. Eligible activities include public services. As a reminder, there is a 15% cap of the city's annual CDPG allocation that's dedicated to public services, public facilities and public infrastructure improvements. Housing-related activities could include rehabilitation of owner-occupied and rental housing, housing properties, as well as providing economic development activities that could be in the form of grants or loans to small businesses to create or retain jobs for low-income households, as well as planning and administration. And again, there's a 20% cap on the city's annual CDB allocation that's dedicated to planning and administration. Some eligible activities include political or religious activities, new construction of housing, and routine maintenance such as filling in potholes, repainting public facilities, and et cetera. Additionally, the city is required to spend 70% of CDPG funds that primarily benefit moderate, benefit low and moderate income persons. This is an overview of potential uses for home funds. The home fund program is designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. So, so some eligible activities include building, buying, and/or rehabilitating affordable rental and owner-occupied housing. Additionally, under the home program, and another eligible activity is providing rental assistance to income-eligible households. For home administration, there is a 10% cap of the annual home allocation. And additionally, the city is also required to set aside what's called HO, to set aside a requirement, also known as Community Development Housing Development Organization. In other words, a nonprofit organization that has the capacity and organ, or, and experience to own, develop, or sponsor affordable housing. And usually, that's a 15% set aside of the city's home allocation. Currently, that requirement has been suspended through December 31st of 2025. And this just provides an overview of the city's community outreach efforts and development of our consolidated plan and annual action plan. Through the month of October, the city distributed a community needs survey that was available on the city's website in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And on October 8th, the city held a stakeholder workshop inviting important nonprofit organizations, as well as city staff that work directly with low-income households to provide feedback. On October 17th, the city held a community workshop inviting residents to attend to provide additional feedback on what the important, most important needs are in the community. On February 12th, city staff held a study session, just informing the city council of our progress on the development of the consolidated plan and an annual action plan. On April 9th, there was a public hearing, which initiated the required 30-day public review of the consolidated plan and annual action plan. So the, the draft consolidated plan and action plan was available for 30 days on the city's website, as well as on public counters for the public to review. And tonight represents the final public hearing for the adoption of the consolidated plan and action plan. Here's a brief overview of the community survey results. The most important public infrastructure needs were street and alley improvements. The most important community facility needs included parks and recreational facilities, as well as healthcare facilities. The most important special needs services included anti-crime programs, services for the homeless, health services. Most important housing needs were Most important housing needs were homeownership assistance and housing code enforcement. As it relates to most important special needs housing, it was housing for seniors and affordable rental housing. And the most important business development and jobs needs were for the job creation and retention to benefit low-income households. The results of our stakeholder meeting, the city staff were present, as well as a variety of nonprofit organizations that work directly with low-income households, and these are just the results of the most significant needs. So that included the need for housing. There is a need for food and securities and utility assistance, as well as disability-related discrimination allegations were the most pressing needs that were identified, as well as the need for more housing options and rental assistance, the need for financial literacy education, roadway improvements, and shelters. And additionally, this was the consensus that resulted out of our community workshop. There was a need for more affordable rental housing, housing for seniors and persons with disabilities. A member of the public identified insufficient bus stops. The city should be more walkable. And lastly, mobile home residents are vulnerable, given the rising housing costs in Westminster and Orange County. With that, this is a brief overview of the priority needs and the associated goals that are addressing those needs. So in relations to the housing needs, the city identified the goal of preserving existing housing and creating new affordable housing. In relations to community services, the city has a goal to support agencies that assist special needs populations and provide needed community services to benefit low and moderate income persons, including unhoused individuals and families. In relations to park and recreational facilities, the city has a goal to enhance and update public infrastructure and community facilities that benefit low and moderate income neighborhoods and residents, as well as with those special needs such as seniors, the disabled, and the homeless. In relations to infrastructure improvement needs, the city has a goal to provide needed infrastructure improvements in low- and moderate income neighborhoods. And lastly, as it relates to planning for housing and community development needs, the city has a goal to implement planning for housing and community development through home administration, CDB administration, and the Fair Housing Program. And with that, this is just the annual action plan, which serves as the implementation plan to address the identified needs and goals that are addressed in the five-year consolidated plan. In relations to CDBG activities, these are, again, these are just estimates. HUD did release the final allocations for fiscal year 2025 just yesterday, so these allocations are subject to decreases. There was a slight decrease in CDBG for the upcoming fiscal year in approximately $8,000. So as part of the city's staff's recommendation, as part of this public hearing item, that would give direction for city staff to adjust these allocations proportionally to meet the actual allocations for CDBG. So in public services, again, there's a 15% cap. The city staff is recommending to fund the following activities in terms of public services. So that includes the Family Resource Center, Senior Outreach Center, Home Delivery Meals Program, Summer Youth Program, and Project Shu. In relations to CDBG administration, again, there is a 20% cap of the city's CDBG allocation. City staff is recommending to allocate CDBG program and administration, as well as Fair Housing Foundation, which is a required component as receiving federal funds. And lastly, the remaining funds is really meant to provide funding for public infrastructure improvements. So that goes to street improvements, as well as sidewalk improvements. In relations to home activities, the city staff is recommending to fund $500,000 towards a tenant-based rental assistance program. In relations to home administration, again, there's a 10% cap under home program regulations. So city staff is recommending to allocate the full amount at the 10% cap for home program administration, and the remaining amount will be set aside for a potential project with a local community housing development organization. And with that, there at the last council meeting, one of the council members had asked what the affordable rents are in relations to a two-bedroom unit. So this is only specific to home projects that are funded with home program funds. So this is just an overview of the published rents as it relates to home funding. And with that, city staff is recommending to adopt the fiscal year 2025, 2026 through 2020, 29 slash 2023 consolidated plan and fiscal year 2025, 2026 annual action plan, and adopt fiscal years 2025, 2026 through 2029 through 2030 citizen participation plan, and authorize the city managers to execute the documents required for submission of CDBG and home funding for approval to HUD for review and approval, and authorize staff to adjust funding levels of CDBG and home activities proportionally to match actual allocations when announced by HUD. And additionally, I do want to note that in the, as mentioned in the staff report, there as part of the president's fiscal year 2026 budget to Congress, there is potential implications as it relates to CDBG and home. There's possibly going to be an elimination in regards to CDBG home funding for fiscal year 2026. So nothing is said and shown yet. It still has to go to Congress for appropriation, so it's just for council's notification that there may be implications as part of the fiscal year 2026 as it relates to CDBG and home. So a lot of our programs that are funded out of CDBG and home fund a lot of programs that are coming out of community services, as well as funding our street improvements. So that might have some implications if CDBG and home is eliminated. Council may need to identify other possible funding sources to continue these services or completely eliminate these programs and activities for the fiscal year 2026. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and at this time, I would like to open up for the council question for staff.
I have a question. Michael, just to go back to the beginning, how much, if the administration were to, you know, remove that funding, how much, can you go back to the amount of money that is that would be stand to lose? The community would stand to lose?
So in relations to CDBG, again, that fluctuates on an annual basis, so that could, for CDBG alone, that's $1 million annually. And then in relations to home, that's about approximately $400,000 annually.
Million and a half, approximately a million and a half, and a lot of services. On the admin, is that that amount that you have allocated for admin, is that 20%? Is that amount 20%?
In relations to CDBG, that's 20%. There's a 20% cap, and then for home, it's 10%.
So can we allocate less than 20% to the admin?
We can, but typically, most cities, a majority of cities, will tend to cap it at that 20% because there's a lot of reporting that comes along with these grant funding, so that pays a portion of staffing time for monitoring and compliance and preparing these plans that pays for these type of projects.
Do we know the cost, staff cost for all that admin? Is it that amount?
It's close to it. Yes.
Okay. All right. The other question I have for the, was it CHUD, the Community Housing Development Organization? Right now, it's at a million two. Realistically, how much do we really need to have in there to really attract an organization to? I mean, I know with Mr. Cross, we did, I want to say five?
Yeah, that was a completely different funding source, but I mean, it just varies on what developers are asking for to fill that gap financing. It's very difficult. And, you know, Westminster and Orange County, in a built-out community, it's very hard to, you know, firstly, identify a potential site for a potential project. But also, in relations to, you know, state funding, in particular, you know, state tax credits, it's a very competitive process. So everything really needs to pincer out. In terms of, to answer your question, of how much would, you know, the city would need to set aside for a potential project, it just varies from project to project.
So how do we go about, do we reach out, do an RFP?
So yes, we did release an RFP about a month ago, and we, as part of the RFP process, we included approximately $3 million. It's another funding source of our old redevelopment housing set-aside funds. It's going to be coming into council at the June 11th meeting. We did receive a few responses in relation to the RFP. So we'll be coming back with proposed recommendations as part of that process.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else from the council? I have a question for you. I know that we went through this at the last meeting, and is there, with the numbers that you are presenting tonight for adoption, is there any changes from that number that you proposed last time?
Yes, so...
Which one is that?
All activities except for street improvements will be decreased, and Fair Housing Foundation will be decreased minimally. There was, we, the city, received a slight decrease in CDBG allocations in an approximately $8,000. So staff is recommending to make decreases proportionally to the proposed activities, with the exception of the Fair Housing Foundation and street improvements, which will remain the same.
Do you think there's any future changes on this one, or any recommendation?
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would like to open up for the public comments. Is there anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, we have one speaker, Harry Raines.
I spoke about this quite a bit when we had the last meeting on it, but I'm going to read exactly what it says on the staff report. Michael did a great job and has been doing a great job on these programs, but I'm going to read it because he, in the staff report, it's very well put out. "On May 2nd, 2025, the Trump administration released its fiscal year 2026 skinny budget, which proposes eliminating the community development block grant CDBG and home investment partnerships home programs. These programs are the backbone of the city's affordable housing, homelessness prevention, and community development efforts. The proposed cuts would eliminate more than $2 billion in annual federal funding that supports local governments across the country. For Westminster, that would mean a loss of approximately $1 million in CDBG and $400,000 in home funding each year. Funds that directly support tenant-based rental assistance, street and sidewalk improvements, youth and senior programs, and affordable housing development. If Congress adopts this proposal, the city would need to consider whether to allocate general fund resources to preserve these critical services or face the potential elimination of programs that serve the city's most vulnerable residents." And this is the start of a trend that we're going to see more of, I predict. And this is, some say, oh, it's only a million and a half a year, but for Westminster, that's the difference between those reserves being used and not used, okay? Literally, it is very important for us. I've always championed for, and I'm still championing for, affordable housing for seniors, not low-income 50%. I'm talking about extremely low, or they even call it acutely low now, less than 15% of the AMI. Your seniors are, as we honor tonight, older Americans, you know, were to be honored and celebrated and revered, not pushed out into the street. And a lot of the programs that are being cut in addition to this are hurting the seniors, the most vulnerable, and children in our community. So I think this, we need to, as a city, I don't know if this is possible, because we get, I'm glad she's not here, but perhaps we can send some sort of, like the county did about Medicaid cuts, you know, some kind of letter, or individually, the council members can do it, to Congress and say, hey, you know, CDBG, I mean, illustrate for them who these programs support. It's seniors, it's our most vulnerable, it's our poor, and try to encourage them to not make those cuts. I know that's at the federal level. We've got Derek Tran, who is on our side for not cutting this stuff and for not cutting healthcare and the other things on the table. But Michael has done a great job, the consultant. Hopefully, we'll get more participation, but my thing is always senior, truly affordable housing where rent is based on the percentage of your income. Thank you so much.
That concludes our speakers.
All right. At this time, I still open up for the council members' discussion. If not, then I will move to approve, adopt the multiple plans related to allocation for federal CDBG and homes fund as recommended by staff.
A second.
Mayor, before we go to the motion, can we please close the public hearing?
Yes, close the public hearing and then move on to the council action.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Wynn, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. This is to adopt fiscal years 2025, 26 through 2029, 30 consolidated plan and fiscal year 2025, 26 annual action plan, and adopt fiscal years 2025, 26 through 2029, 30 citizen participation plan, and authorize the city manager to execute the documents required for submission of CDBG and home funding to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for review and approval, and authorize staff to adjust the funding levels of CDBG and home activities proportionally to match the actual allocations when announced by HUD. I'll go to call roll. District 3, Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Wynn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Next public hearing item is public hearing to consider case number 2023-0670, which is vesting tentative tract map development review and affordable housing density bonus to construct 89 residential condominium units at 530 Westminster Mall within the Westminster Mall specific plan. I may ask for staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Stephanie Tomayeno, Contract Principal Planner, presenting on behalf of the Community Development Department. There you go, that's our presentation. The Westminster Mall specific plan area covers about 100 acres, and it includes multiple parcels under different ownership. The specific plan was adopted by the city in 2022 after a multi-year planning and community engagement effort. The specific plan area is identified in yellow, and the city boundaries are identified in red. The project site is highlighted in blue, and it totals about 3.6 acres. The Westminster Mall specific plan serves as a long-term vision to guide the coordinated redevelopment of the mall area. It allows up to 3,000 residential units across the site while also requiring at least 600,000 square feet of retail to be maintained or newly constructed. The specific plan was intended to be flexible, so the plan uses broad land use concepts to guide development over time. The specific project being presented tonight, it's located within the red area of this map, which was envisioned to serve as a residential buffer between the mixed-use district within the interior of the mall, yet to be proposed or developed, and the existing residential neighborhoods across the street. The project site is located at the corner of Edward Street and Royal Oak Drive, and it's currently developed with an older commercial building which was previously occupied by Babies R Us. The site does not have direct access from Edward Street. Instead, all vehicle access is provided from Westminster Mall Drive, which is a private road. Across the street are single-family homes in the city of Huntington Beach. Now, during the specific plan outreach process, residents raised concerns about traffic. And as a result of that outreach process, various traffic and pedestrian improvements were incorporated into the specific plan. So future development would be required to contribute to the improvements at this particular street intersection. Tonight's request includes three applications from the applicant TTLC Westminster Silin LLC. This has also been referred to, for simplicity purposes, as the True Life Project. First, the applicant is requesting a development review to demolish the existing commercial building and to construct 89 units designed as three-story attached townhomes. Second, they've submitted a vesting tentative tract map to allow the units to be sold as condominiums. And third, the applicant is requesting an affordable housing density bonus in exchange for providing nine deed-restricted units for low-income households. Let's see. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this is actually, give me just one moment. It looks like this is actually... is actually the Planning Commission presentation. Just jump ahead. Okay, thank you very much. So residential projects are governed by various state and local laws. For this particular project, staff evaluated the project for consistency with the Westminster Mall specific plan, the Westminster Municipal Code, and state housing laws such as the Housing Accountability Act, Housing Crisis Act, and the dense, and California density bonus law. Staff determined that the project complies with these local and state laws. The project includes nine affordable units, which will be deed-restricted to low-income households earning more, no more than 80% of the area median income, which, as shown on the slide, which is determined by the 2024 HCD limits. It could range from about $88,000 for a one-person household to $126,000 for a four-person household. The project includes, oops, state law entitles the project to have one concession and unlimited number of waivers of development standards if they are necessary to achieve the proposed density. The city is required to grant these benefits if the project meets all legal criteria, and cities cannot deny them based on local discretion. The project includes attached townhomes, which are configured in three-story buildings. Each unit includes an attached two-car garage, and the units come in a mix of two- and three-bedroom floor plans with an average unit size of about 1,500 square feet. The architecture reflects a modern style with a mix of colors and materials to break up the building mass and to add visual interest. Each unit features a distinct front entry with the building elevations using varied materials, colors, and roof lines to emphasize articulation. This project proposes vehicular access from two driveways along Westminster Mall Drive, which are located at the red arrows. That is a private internal road that loops through the mall property. The project includes affordable housing and is located near a major transit stop, so therefore, under density bonus law, it qualifies for a reduced parking requirement of just 1.5 spaces per unit or 134 spaces. The project actually exceeds that by providing 192 onsite parking spaces, which equals about 2.2 spaces per unit. Again, it exceeds the minimum parking requirements required by state law. The project includes several open space areas for residents. This includes a central landscape paseo that provides a walkable pedestrian-friendly connection through the site. There's also a private park with seating, barbecues, and shade structures, which are detailed in this slide. Enhanced landscaping is provided along all edges of the project site to create an attractive street scene. In addition, each unit includes a balcony and porch to provide additional open space for future residents. Overall, the project is consistent with the Westminster Mall specific plan. The specific plan identifies this part of the site for residential use and encourages new housing types to meet the city's long-term goals. The proposed townhomes align with that vision by providing for-sale housing that's well-suited for a range of households, including first-time homebuyers and families. At the street intersection, there is also a small open plaza with public art that will help to find the gateway into the Westminster Mall and provide a welcoming pedestrian experience. On April 16th, the Planning Commission held a notice public hearing to consider the project. Now, prior to the public hearing, notification was provided to the public through various means, including mailers that were sent to all nearby owners and residents. The applicant also voluntarily held an open house-style community meeting on March 12th and provided direct notice to the public inviting them to this applicant-led meeting. On April 16th, the Planning Commission unanimously adopted a resolution recommending the city council approve the project as presented. The commission did not recommend changes to the project design or conditions of approval. In summary, the proposed project is consistent with the vision of the Westminster Mall specific plan. It supports the city's affordable housing goals by providing nine affordable units for low-income households while offering a high-quality townhome product. The project complies with state housing laws and it exceeds state-required parking minimums. The project will not create traffic impacts beyond what was originally adopted and considered with the specific plan. Lastly, the conditions of approval require coordination with other parcels to ensure the specific plan vision is carried out equitably as the broader mall site redevelops over time. With that, the Planning Commission and staff recommend adopting a resolution approving the applicant's requested vesting tentative tract map, development review application, and affordable housing density bonus with associated incentives and waivers. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the detailed presentation. Do we have the applicant in-house? Yes, and if that's the case, I would like to ask to come up to the podium for comments or presentation if there's any.
Yes, there'll be two of us tonight. I'm Gordon Jones and my associate Dave Stern. We're both with the True Life Companies.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and other council members for allowing us to finally come forward tonight. Our company, the True Life Companies, is a, is a community development company. We specialize in projects just like the project that's before you tonight. We're a developer with 10 projects currently in different stages of processing right now in the Southern California market, and we have about 35 other projects, 35 total projects in other cities throughout the state of California and in the West. Our team here in SoCal has super-deep experience in the business of for-sale residential homes. We are really excited to bring this project to you tonight because it's been a long road for us. I mean, we understand California takes a long time to work through the process, but this one's been extraordinary. It's been, we're going on five years. And it was really just about the specific plan, and I know when you have multiple property owners on a very important, large piece of property like this one, that it takes, it takes time to work through the specific plan details. And, you know, thankfully, that was done a couple of years ago, and we immediately began processing this application that's before you tonight. But we've been involved for that period of time and working with all of the stakeholders along the way. It's, I have to go on record as saying, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the owner of this property. Connie Sillin has been very, very patient and understanding with the process and, and what we've been going through to work with us in partnership to get to this point. So I want to thank her publicly for that. Absolutely thrilled to be here tonight. We're really grateful for the guidance and communication of staff, Adolfo and Russ Hildebrand in the past, and now Stephanie recently has just been extraordinary to work with. I really, really appreciate just the open dialogue, and if there's an issue, we hear about it and we can address and, and hopefully find solutions. So it's just been that way, felt like a true partnership. We really are of, of the strong opinion that this is a perfect use for this portion of the specific plan. As Stephanie mentioned in the staff report, it is in the area that's deemed to be residential along Edward Street, adjacent to single-family. And as you, you know, move into the specific plan to obtain the density that we're looking for in the overall, this is a, a very logical and, and, and good transitional use from the single-family to the higher-density multifamily that will be closer to the center of the specific plan and, and the develop, overall development. We're, there's more detail I know to go through. I don't want to exceed our time limitation, so I would, at this time, like to introduce Dave Stern, who is our Senior Managing Director, and he's been working day-to-day with Stephanie on the project, and he can give a few more details, but obviously both of us will be here to answer any questions.
Please.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, Gordon. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us here today. I'll try to be brief since staff did a great job on their presentation and just point out a few things. Stephanie, if maybe we can put up the exhibits for the power of one?
Yeah.
Ah, there we go. Just on the next page is the aerial. I just want to point out our location there in the northwest corner of the plan. What makes this great as a Phase 1 of the vision for this specific plan is that we're pretty much self-contained, we're using existing infrastructure. The traffic for the proposed development is actually less than the existing traffic from the commercial uses, so we'll be taking access off Westminster Mall Drive. We have traffic calming features there at the intersection with Edwards. And then if we can go to the next picture real quick. So I just want to linger on this for a moment. You see our location, the star there, priority use residential, and it's really the only portion of the mall property that doesn't have a second priority use. So that was done intentionally really to emphasize that that would be purely a residential area as a transition, like Gordon said, between what will be a pretty dense mixed-use core in the mall with 3,000 predicted units and 600,000 square feet of commercial, and of course, the existing residential uses to the west. The project is 100% consistent with the specific plan in this regard. We're going to provide low-income housing at 80% AMI, which will contribute towards the arena needs for that goal. It's visioned as 300 units of affordable housing in the specific plan, and we follow what's called the terrace frontage standards along Edward Street, providing that more urban edge, yet with a sensitivity to the uses across the street. If we go to the site plan quick? So Stephanie said 89 residential townhomes, 80 market rate, nine deed-restricted low-income units at 80%, and I wanted to point out that those will be dispersed evenly throughout the community. No one will know which ones are affordable, which ones are market rate. They will look exactly the same, and they're distributed throughout all the phases of the property. The units are two-to-three-bedroom homes. They all have two-car garages, and they range from 1,216 square feet to 1,781 square feet. And the 192 total parking spaces are actually 58 more than required under state density bonus law. We have a total of 22,120 square feet of open space between private and common area, and that exceeds the 10% of the project area, which is required by the specific plan. And finally, our density comes out to about 24 DUs per acre, and again, we see that as a perfect transition, although the specific plan provides a lot of flexibility as to what density is where, we think that's a great transition between the uses to the west and the east. Have one shot of our elevations on the next slide. So we listened to Planning Commission's recommendations. We actually updated our architectural package. We introduced a new color scheme. We did some modifications and enhancements so that front-side elevations that faced exterior streets are actually enhanced. We introduced kind of a more modern coastal look. The three-story homes are 37 feet in height, and the buildings are set back an average of 53 feet from the center line of Edwards. Then I'll just sum it up by saying on the last slide here, in addition to the unanimous Planning Commission approval, fully compliant with SB 330, which is the Housing Accountability Act, so this is a conforming by right project. We utilize four waivers/concessions and, under state density bonus law, to increase the intended residential density and to include those nine affordable units. And again, this will make a great start towards meeting what I believe is 2,550 units as the arena numbers envisioned for the mall on residential. We utilize existing infrastructure, access road, utility points of connection, and very importantly, the project will participate in its fair share of the future CFD, Financing District for the Mall, and the future retail preservation fee to help ensure that the commercial footage gets built. Perhaps most importantly of all, provides much-needed new homes and homeownership opportunities for Westminster residents, and we're very pleased to be a part of your vision. So thank you. Our team will be here for questions as needed.
Thank you very much. Is there any question from, or comments from appellate? Hearing none, so moving on to mayor and city council question for staff. Anything?
I have just one question. How much collaboration was there with the other property owners in the, in the design of this project?
Not so much on the detailed design, but we've had multiple meetings with both Washington Prime and Shop Off. In fact, the most recent one we had together with all three of us. So there was a lot of talk about the, more of the commonalities, you know, where are you taking access? Infrastructure, a lot of interest on their part regarding if we're going to participate in the financing district and the retail preservation fees, since they need to build retail. And also discussion on, you know, open space and how we might contribute towards that. So not so much in terms of the design of the homes, let's say, or the buildings, but more of those common issues quite a bit lately.
Where was, what was the consensus of trying to meet some of those, you know, recommendation requirements for park and retail?
Right, and we do have, obviously, reciprocal parking easements among that. On the retail, I think, you know, they were initially concerned because they were going to have to be, build retail. We don't, we are in the residential-only zone, but I think when they came to understand our participation and that we willingly participated and have a condition to participate in both the financing district up to 1.6% and the retail preservation fee, their concerns seemed to go away. So I know they had submitted some letters early on before Planning Commission, and in our last meeting we left, they seemed like we had satisfied their concerns.
Dave, one of our conditions of approval is that the, kind of, there's a governing operating agreement between all of the mall owners, and one of the conditions of approval before our final plans can be approved is to have that agreement revised and agreed to by all the parties relative to all these different issues and, you know, kind of development issues that we'll be addressing together. That all has to be resolved and those, and that document amended to the satisfaction of staff before we can process, I mean, before gain approval of the final plans. So they were comfortable with that condition being part of this approval tonight, knowing that, you know, we're going to take the next several months to work through these issues.
I have one more. Thank you. And then just on the design, I have a, a design kind of comment. I know you do have one public art piece at the, at the faces Edwards. Is there, I mean, I would like to see more of an art component in other areas of the site. Is there possibilities of that?
Yes, I think there's a possibility to do it at our secondary entrance where we have our pocket park and community gathering area, so, which is right off the ring road in the southeast corner of the site. I think there could be an opportunity to do something there as well.
Yeah, I think that would really enhance the, this, this project, you know, to introduce an art component, more opportunities for that.
Sure.
Is there something that you can just promise to do? I mean, I can't hold that, or can we put it in, I don't know if we can put it in the conditions, but I think that would be a very, a positive for this, this project.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's the city's purview and certainly can be read into the record tonight that we'll make an effort to do a public art piece in the southeast corner of the site.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No worries.
Stephanie, would you go to your last slide on your presentation? Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question for you. Will you please come to the podium? Seems like that you met all the conditions that we put out, and this is from, this is a summary from our staff report. If we, if they- If we, if this project were to approve tonight, what is your next step?
Well, the next step, one of the things, as Gordon says, we're going to work through all the details with our neighbors and also with Midway Sanitation on the sewer. We've already begun discussions with them on that. We need to get the REA amended, the CCNRs, and then the next step beyond that is file engineering plans.
Is there any hiccup or any difficulties that you'd see in front of you?
Nothing immediately, and there are a lot of details, I think, you know, to work through in the final engineering, but I don't see any big impediments that can't be overcome.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else from the council?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Wayne?
I have a question.
Sure.
I know that the project exceeds the parking requirement, but I don't see much of the visitor parking area. How many are there?
I believe there are 14, I believe.
14?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, without further question?
That brings me another question that councilmember Mark Wayne brought up. Is there a conditions and covenant for the use of the park, the garage for parking?
Yes. Good question. So the way that we handle this, we've done a lot of these higher-density infill developments, and we mandate through the CCNRs for all the residents, they sign this, when they sign their sales documents and they acknowledge it. They have to use their garage for parking. They can't fill it up with storage, so then they're trying to park in the guest spaces. You know, granted, not every community is for large families. This one will be for folks with two cars, but we take it pretty seriously, and they have to use their garages to park, and then through the HOA gets enforced.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And if I may add, there is a provision within the conditions of approval, condition number nine. It states here that the CCNRs shall include a provision that states enclosed garages shall be used for the primary purpose of parking vehicles, and each owner shall ensure that each garage accommodates at all times the number of vehicles for which the garage was originally designed.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes.
What if the owner has a lot of guests and they use the parking spaces in the mall? I mean, is there, will there be any issue with the rest of the mall owner if they're a visitor that use the mall parking spaces that's not in, you know, within the visitor area?
Right. I mean, that's not a, that's not a long-term solution, certainly. Right now, there is a reciprocal parking easement between us and Washington Prime. I think, you know, we envision, we haven't addressed that particular issue, but we don't envision that being part of the long-term solution. And when this project gets developed, you know, part of the sales documents is going to be, you know, parking onsite for residents is to stay onsite.
So there's a provision within HOA where the owner cannot convert the garage into like a rental space or to some means?
That's correct. That's correct. And by the way, the CCNRs are submitted to city staff as part of the final map package, so they get to review all that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayne, if I may add to that, the overall development of the site as it pertains to traffic and parking is something that the city will oversee with its consultant. So while this project is the first one to come in, we're not really concerned about the parking and traffic impact, but as more and more projects come online, there's going to be an overall traffic management plan and parking management plan for the entire site that the city will approve ultimately.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I would like to, thank you. I would like to open up for public comments. Is there any speaker sign up for this?
Yes, our first speaker is Carolyn Osborne, followed by K. L. DeHart. Our next speaker is K. L. DeHart, followed by Teri Reins.
Good evening. Thank you for waiting and thank you for listening to me tonight. I spoke at the last meeting, and unfortunately, I was the person that said that the mall was going to be sold again. So, you know, I don't like to end things on a downbeat. I like things to end on an uptick. So I made you guys a new concept proposal. I made plenty of them for the whole city council to look over for the whole vision of the mall area. I know you've been looking for different things from the general public, and people haven't really put together anything really concrete for you to look at, to have, and these are based in real-world things, real developers, real hotels, and things that can make the city money, you know? At the end, that's what we really need, is a more vibrant area over there that will bring more commerce to the city of Westminster so that you guys can continue to thrive in the future. I think that's super important. I think this new project is going to be really good that they're developing, at least I hope so. I am concerned about the sewer because those are, that's a really old sewage system along that line. To let you know, I've lived in my house since the mall was built, so I've been there since there was a goldfish farm, and my mom was friends with Margie Rice. So I've been here a long, long time, and I know the landscape over there very well, and they're going to run into some problems, and that's bound to happen. But as long as the council's aware of it, that it might cost you money that way to get the sewers right and everything going with this project, then I think it should go forward. It took me a while to make these for you guys. I hope that you take the time to look at them in your own time, and if anything interests you that I've done, please reach out to me. I have my contact information. I can offer you PDFs. I thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I saw the Carolyn. She walked in, so if you'd like, I can have Carolyn Osborne come up, and then Teri Reins will be right after her.
Good evening, council. My name is Carolyn Osborne. I'm from Huntington Beach. I'd like to bring up some of the issues with the high-density housing. Traffic safety, there's schools around and children in the single-family dwellings, and their whole community is going to be running into the traffic with the schools as well as, each unit may have two parking spots, but not many people actually put two cars in their parking spot. It's either becomes sort of a fun room or it gets filled with junk. So even with the additional parking, as you see with other high-density, low-income areas, the parking then goes into the following neighborhoods, which right there is across the street. So besides residents not being able to park or have their friends park in their neighborhood, the driving around looking for cars is also unsafe for the kids that are in the area, maneuvering the streets and stuff. And the stress on the infrastructure, the sewage water, lights and signals, in two- and three-bedrooms means at least two or three cars per unit, because I think that it's not going to be so much families that live in there, but people that can't afford a single home. And so it may be three people, three individuals, adults in the units, and then they're going to have at least three cars. So there's definitely going to be overflow beyond what they've allotted, the extra allotment. Because these are sold, people are going to buy them and then rent them out, and then that brings in transient people, monthly rentals, anonymous people, and it's, they're all going to be spreading out into the neighborhoods. Walking around neighborhoods, as you can, you see that, the, when you're renting a place, crime, crime goes up as opposed to homeowners. The high density also stresses and damages local ecosystems, and I don't know, I didn't hear what the impact is going to be on the environment, the local environment, and it decreases the housing prices for the folks across the street. So I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Next speaker is Teri Reins.
Hello, it's great to finally see plans for the first mall site project. I hope you all read 337-page agenda report. The devil's in the details. At first glance, the project provides more parking than state law exceptions mandate, but 38% of the two-car garages, all 34 Plan 2 three-bedroom, three-bath garages are just one-car width deep garages, forcing owners to tandem park in their own garages. Yet the 20 smaller two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units have regular two-car garages. It's deceptive. The word tandem is never mentioned, only illustrated in the unit floor plans. Buyers avoid and despise tandem parking garages like the plague. They're not practical for working families with busy varying schedules, and they lower resale values. Cars will end up parked in front of their garages with no driveways, and even worse, then at the Westminster Village. Trash cans will have to be put out in front of the garages, adding to parking garage and circulation issues. The two guest parking locations with just one handicap space will be ripe for abuse. But 34 tandem parking garages are needed for the applicant to achieve the desired density. All nine affordable units have those tandem garages and are priced for the highest lower-income buyers at 80% AMI. Page 18 of the mall-specific plan states provide a diversity of housing types and range of affordability, but pricing for these four sale units, any lower than about 75% to 80% of AMI would not pencil out for the applicant. Key conditions, number seven, amend the mall operating agreement and CCNRs to allow residential use and development. Number eight, record covenant to participate in a future city infrastructure financing district with the newly kept, newly added cap of 1.6% total property tax rate. Nine, record governing CCNRs. Ten, create and record long-term maintenance agreements for private roads, alleys and courts with funding sources. Sixteen, pay specific plan reimbursement fee. Twenty-six, pay all city impact fees. Thirty-five, pay share of city initiative funding district with the same newly added cap 1.6%. Thirty-eight, pay fair share to EROP for retail preservation. Now capped at $650,043, comply with mitigation measures and design features in the MMRP and pay applicable fees or costs. Page 45 of the specific plan states residential uses can be integrated into the project area but should not be the majority use at the expense of creating a vibrant and economically strong retail and entertainment destination. There is lingering concern that the other mall site owners and target may have some concerns still with this first project. There's also uncertainty surrounding the impact and outcome from Washington Prime Group's announcement last month that they are selling off their majority share of the site. Will Shop-Off buy it? If not, will a new owner work closely with Shop-Off and other owners to create a consolidated, cohesive project plan site? However, these concerns fall outside of the scope of this public hearing, so bottom line, there's absolutely no legal basis to deny this project, so vote yes tonight, and let's get this party started.
We have one more speaker, Janet Viveros.
Hi, good evening. I have a quick comment. I'd just like to say that on behalf of many residents, this is a project that many feel like it is what Westminster needs, but at the same time, many also feel like this is a project that's being pushed upon the community, and I feel like there is a lot of logistics that have not yet been accounted for. I think it is worth looking into it before making a vote on it. Thank you.
No more further speakers, mayor.
All right. So now I would like to go ahead and close the public comment and move on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, did we want to hear from the applicant to see if they had any additional comments in rebuttal?
Okay. Is there any additional comment from applicant?
Yeah, there was, there was a lot there, but I did hear some concern over the tandem garages and the, you know, the fact that a lot of times people put other stuff in the garages and prohibit parking in the garages, which councilmember Manzo, that's kind of your, your concern as well, but how we handle that, and we've done a lot of these projects, communities have to be managed through a HOA, professional HOA management firm, and so what they do is they require annual evidence from every homeowner that the garage is still, there's still the capability to park two cars in each garage, and they do that through a photo, you have to provide a photograph with a date stamp of your garage with no stuff in it so you can park two cars. The tandem, it is, is true. The only way we could achieve this density is because of the tandem garages are a little, you know, it's a narrower home, but it's really designed, it's a smaller home, it's narrow, and it's designed for, you know, a lot of single buyers that don't have two cars, or maybe there's a work-from-home and, and they have one car. A lot of families are doing that now. And so it's really, Mark, it's a, it's the lower-priced home, and so it provides, it is an opportunity to be able to buy a new home, if, you know, if you buy one of the lower-priced tandem homes. So it really serves that purpose. Is it ideal? No, but it does provide us the ability to have the correct number of homes into the project to make it feasible. So that, as to other, you know, the rentals by investors and things like that, those are, those are all kind of requirements that, you know, that a builder, a builder doesn't, you know, a builder wants a community of owner-occupied homes. And so they, they really watch that and limit that as they sell homes. And there are requirements with, you know, various Fannie and Freddie financing that that number can exceed a certain amount in a given community. So there's, there's things that kind of regulate that, but it's primarily, you know, the market is, the builders typically limit the sale of people that are not going to occupy their own. I made a couple other notes, you know, stress on the sewer. I mean, everything we do in terms of our new improvements are going to be, you know, pursuant to what Midway wants us to do, obviously with their design, and obviously our staff as well. So I, I know that we're going to, we're going to be providing the infrastructure that's, that's going to be proper for our density and the number of homes. I didn't really have anything else that I jotted down, but maybe I'm missing something. So, okay.
Yeah, just on the sewer, we also have a condition that Midway Sanitation has to sign off on all the plans and what the sewer solution is in the interim for our project before our final map is recorded. And then ultimately, if the sewer situation changes, when the larger mall develops specifically to the south of us, there could be a lift station or whatever in the future, our participation in that CFD, which is going to help fund all those future improvements, ensures that our project participates in that solution.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other comments from staff? No? Okay. Now it's officially, the public comment's officially closed. Moving on to mayor and councilmember discussion, if there's any.
I just have a comment.
All right, please.
Comment on for the public and as far as the subject of the tandem garage, I've been, and I'm building these type of projects for years and years now, these type of, for this type of construction, these type of projects, the tandem garage is pretty common. It's been common for quite some time now, and I've never really heard any complaints from the people who buy these homes. They all seem to like them, so up to this point, I've never heard any negatives from the homebuyers on these, as far as for tandem garages. I think it's a great project that meets all the requirements, the state and, you know, the specific plan requirements, and it's a good, good-looking project. I think it'll be successful, and I look forward to getting off, get, put some shovels in the ground and get going. So looking forward, and thank you for working with our staff, and I know our staff's been working really hard on this as well, so thank you. And I look forward to, to your project.
Yep. All right. I think, I think we have done a good job of, you know, meeting our requirements and working closely with the staff to develop their very well plan, and I think that we should move forward with this project. And if there is none from the councilmembers, then I will move. with this project, and if there is none from the council members, then I will move to approve the projects.
Mayor, I would like to, a second, but I also want to read into the record, read into one of the conditions that the owner, the applicant, agreed to implement an art component and the other entrance, so read that into the record or put it into the record or the conditions.
So if it's agreeable to the applicant, that condition would indicate that the applicant shall establish an art facility, a public art piece at the southeast corner of the property? Is that acceptable to you?
Just to keep it consistent with the first one that we're doing, I was, if there's some language about it to be complementary to...
In harmony with...
Yeah, yeah, something about complementary or in harmony with the other one.
So the applicant shall install a public art piece at the southeast corner of the property in harmony with the other art piece?
It sounds, it sounds good.
And that's acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so that could be a new condition, number 45.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, and I believe there is motion, is it on the floor?
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by Vice Mayor Manzo, to add condition number 45 as read into the record by City Attorney Porter, and adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California Approving Case Number 2023-0670, Including A Besting Tentative Track Map Development Review and Affordable Housing Density Bonus With Associated Concessions, Waivers, and/or Reductions of Development Standards To Allow The Construction Of 89 Residential Contaminium Units, Including Nine Units Deed Restricted For Low-Income Households On An Approximately 3.62-Acre Site Located At 530 Westminster Mall, Westminster, California, 92683, APN 195-373-15, Within The Westminster Mall Specific Plan." I'll go to call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Winn?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here, all right. And next is regular business, and this is the lead to 5.1 Purchase and Delivery of Diesel, Fuel, and Gasoline For The City Fleet. So do we need to have the required from council for the stop report? If not, then I will entertain the motion.
Motion to approve.
I second.
All right.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Manzo, seconded by District 3, Councilmember Winn. This is to award the bid to SC Fuels and authorize staff to approve a purchase order issued to SC Fuels in the year lead not to exceed amount of $475,000 for an initial one-year term with four renewable years for the purchase and delivery of diesel fuel and gasoline for the city fleet and reject all other bids. I'll go to call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Winn?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
5.2, Award Of Contract For Street Improvements For Trust Avenue From Beach Boulevard To Hoover Street, Project Number P-2624.
Move to approve. A second.
I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by District 3, Councilmember Winn. This is to approve the award of contract to the lowest and responsible bidder in the amount of $777,355 to RJ Noble Company, and that all other bids be rejected, and authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $77,735.50 for potential change orders, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. I'll go to call for roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Winn?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
5.3, First Reading Of An Ordinance Amending Section 13.08.130 Of The Westminster Municipal Code To Update The Cross-Connection Control Program To Comply With The Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook. Any question on this? I don't think we have any questions, so...
What is the cross-connection control?
We have a presentation that can explain that.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead and present.
Good evening. My name is Nolani Lille. I am the Management Analyst for the Water Division, and tonight I'm here to present our current cross-control program and the current updates that we have before you. So the City of Westminster's Water Division is committed to providing safe, high-quality drinking water at the lowest possible cost to our customers, both to Midway City portions and all of Westminster. In doing so, our water is monitored daily and tested weekly for contaminants. The City of Westminster's water system currently meets or exceeds water quality standards set by the US EPA and the State of California. Our extensive water quality program currently operates seven days a week to ensure that the water delivered to our customers is free and safe of any contaminants. So what is our current cross-connection control program? Well, right now, our program complies with the 1980's California Title 17 of California Code of Regulations. Under this program, the Water Division is responsible for a number of tasks. Those tasks include ensuring each current backflow prevention device is tested annually, determining what devices are required at any new location, approving new installations, and performing onsite inspections when needed. To administer this program, the Water Division maintains current records of customers, device locations, and test results. Annually, letters are mailed out to our residents to make sure that they have the correct documentation they need to have these tests on their devices. So what is a cross-connection? As you can see in this photo right here, a cross-connection is when there's an unsafe connection from our public water system to an unknown substance. So as you can see in this photo, there's a hose bib, and it's connected to a hose, and that is underwater. So what could occur? Well, backflow. Backflow incidents can occur because there's no backflow device. So what is backflow? As you can see in this diagram on the screen, our Westminster Public Water System's goal and what we're required to do is freeing water from our system to our residents. That's normal water flow. If this house right here with the brown contaminated water had a cross-connection, like the image I showed you previously, that water could flow back into our system. Why is this dangerous? Well, that brings unknown contaminants into our water system and can harm our residents and contaminate our water, not meeting our current standards. So this is dangerous, it's unsafe, so what do we do to protect our public water system? Well, in this diagram here, you see the blue water flowing from our public water system through that white device. That device is a backflow prevention assembly device. What does it do? Well, it prevents any of that yellow contaminated water, possibly, we don't know if it's contaminated, but flow back into our system. So that device is the one that we determine at current locations like a retail store, a restaurant, if that location needs these type of devices, to protect our residents and our water system. So why are we really here? Well, those regulations that the state created were from the 1980's, and to improve public health, we have new regulations. The new regulations are the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook. This handbook is very extensive, and it currently expands the regulations from Title 17 to require new regulations. Specifically, we are going to develop a cross-connection control management plan, and what that is, is going to document what we do at the Water Department to protect the public health. It will expand our initial and subsequent hazard assessments, and it extensively increases our record-keeping. It also expands backflow incident response, reporting, and notification. Additionally, it implements a public outreach and education program. So we are going to not only work with the commercial properties, but also all residents as an outreach. We'll update our city website regarding any cross-connection at your personal residence, how to improve that. So before you, that is what our program is.
All right, is there any question from council?
I have one. So how do, and in your slide, you had, you had that fitting, that probably fitting, the anti-backflow device? Like, how many, how many homes and businesses in our city have those? Do we know?
Yes, so currently, we have 1,400 devices installed throughout the city, and the new policy handbook are cross-connection formant, will have to go through each device, inspect it, make sure those records are up to date, and then also expand that to all commercial properties. That's the first phase. So the first phase is we'll go, because, for example, if a retail was a dress shop, and then it switches to a restaurant, so the hazard has changed. So that is what the new policy is requiring. Great, we have 14, we make sure those are great, but now let's expand it to protect our public health.
How often that we require to inspect?
So right now, at the first of the year, the device has to be tested annually. So at the first of the year, our backflow formant sends out letters to residents that have these devices, and then they're given 30 days, they get another letter if they haven't complied. So there's that whole process, and so each year, he goes through all of the records over and over.
Is it, sorry, is there going to be a point where, is it going to be a requirement that you must install these for, when it comes to residents?
So that's kind of what this new regulation is. It's not going to require it at every location, no, but what it is, is us evaluating, as development happens throughout the city, is that project expanding? Is there multiple different hazards that have now developed? So that's what it is doing, but to address specifically, no, not every residential property will be required, because, one, the device is expensive, but, two, the annual testing would be put on the burden of our residents, and that's not one of the requirements.
All right, all right, thank you.
So at this time, I entertain if there is any motion for this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Manzo, seconded by District 3, Councilmember Winn. This is to introduce for first reading an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Amending Ordinance Number 2139 and Amending Section 13.08.130 Of The Westminster Municipal Code To Update The Cross-Connection Control Program Of The City's Water Division," read by title only and waive further reading. I'll go to call roll. District 3, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
District 4, Councilmember Winn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manzo?
Yes.
Mayor Winn?
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
5.4, Outdoor Associates LLC Project Entitlement Extension Request And Propose Amendment To Operating Agreements Number 01-2021. Please, stop report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Ryan Saul, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I will be presenting on item number 5.4. Outdoor Associates LLC is requesting an extension to their previously approved entitlements to develop an electronic billboard. They are also proposing an amendment to the approved operating agreement. Here is an aerial view showing the location of the future billboard relative to the entire city. It is located at 7130 Fenwick Lane and is on the north side of the I-405 freeway. This is a closer look at the location. The bright green bars outline the V-shaped configuration of the signed faces along the freeway. The cross streets on the bottom left of the image are Bolsa Avenue and Golden West Street. Next, here's a brief background of the key events that have led to the developer's request. The operating agreement with Outdoor Associates was approved by the City Council in October 2021. This was done after Planning Commission's approval of the project. Fast forward a few years, August 2024, Caltrans denied the developer's state outdoor advertising permit application. The application was denied on the basis that the I-405 improvement project is still technically incomplete. Caltrans has estimated that the project will not be completed until the middle of 2027. The developer is currently appealing Caltrans denial. There's no active construction or future changes expected near their billboard, so they argue the denial is unwarranted. Because of the denial, Outdoor Associates reached out to the city in December 2024 to request an extension to their building permit. Section 10.10 of the operating agreement allows the developer to request an extension in response to causes beyond the party's reasonable control. Staff found that the request is reasonable since a government action is directly causing a delay in performance. Although the developer's original request was for a five-year extension to the building permit, it was identified by staff that a multi-year extension should not be applied to a building permit. This is due to limitations expressed in the California Building Code. The building officials only authorized to grant permit extensions for periods not more than 180 days each. To satisfy the main intent of the request, which is to keep the project entitlements from expiring, the proposed resolution would allow the building official to issue two consecutive 180-day extensions to the active building permit. It also would allow the community development director to issue a series of 12-month extensions to the project entitlements not to exceed four total extensions. In addition to the extension requests, the developer proposed an amendment to section 2.4 of the operating agreement. This section describes the terms of the annual mitigation fee to be paid to the city by the developer. The proposed amendment would increase the starting mitigation fee from $160,000 to $176,000 per year. This adjustment would result in over $600,000 of additional fiscal revenue collected by the city over the life of the 30-year agreement. To conclude, staff found that the basis for the extension request is a fair interpretation of the operating agreement. Also, Outdoor Associates graciously offered to increase the mitigation fee, considering the billboard has taken much longer to be developed than originally anticipated. For these reasons, staff recommends that the City Council adopts the proposed resolution to approve an extension to the project entitlements and an amendment to section 2.4 mitigation fee in the operating agreement.
Council...
This concludes the presentation. Thanks, and we're available to answer any questions.
Council, you're welcome to ask any question that you have, but I will move to adopt the resolution as recommended.
I just have a question, so is it a five-year extension, and then on top of that is, we can allow issue two 180-day extensions on top of the five-year?
So the initial request by the applicant was a five-year extension to the building permit. Since we found that that wasn't appropriate based on the California Building Code, we allowed 280-day extensions that would be basically implemented immediately, so that would be 360, about a year, that they'd still have left to use this building permit if they're able to basically win their appeal with the, with Caltrans. If they do not exercise that building permit by that time, then there will be four extensions allowed, so basically four years from today's date, that they would still have unexpired project entitlements, and the original request was for five years. Basically, those, the first 180-day extension, the two, and the first project entitlement extension would kind of run concurrently with each other, and then there'd be additional three years for the project entitlements. So that effectively would leave the project entitlements to expire on May 14, 2029.
Hopefully, it's, hopefully they don't have to use it.
Yes, and I will say, the developer has been very clear that they don't expect to use the full amount of time that the city is giving them, but that is what they're entitled to ask for, five years, in their operating agreement, so they exercise that right. They plan to build as soon as they can, get their permit as soon as they can with Caltrans, they've been very clear about that, so at this point, as stated in the presentation, 2027 is when Caltrans is expecting the I-405 to be officially completed, so if it did come to waiting to that time, then it shouldn't be much longer after that until they're able to start constructing.
All right, thank you.
If I can add a little bit of insight to the date, I know that that 2027 date is in conflict to the date that I presented to the, to the community and to the council at a recent council meeting. So all the punch list items, all the improvements related to the project are going to be, in fact, following the timeline that I specified. We're very close to nearing a close... We're very close to nearing a closeout, meaning that we're gonna receive cash from OCTA to finish all the work that the community is upset about, we're all upset about, that needs to be done. The 2027 date that Ryan is referring to is a rather generic term that Caltrans is using as calling, they're calling it a plant establishment period. And it's pretty laughable, because we're building billboards, we're not touching the plants that have been installed as part of the project, nonetheless, that's what they're hanging their hat on. So, we are actually actively working with OCTA and Caltrans, as well as other cities along the corridor that have interest in bringing billboards to the corridor. Actually, the city manager is engaged in various conversations with colleagues about revisiting that 2027, very generic timeline, that doesn't make any sense to anyone, to really expedite, reduce it, so that we can get to the installation of these billboards sooner than later.
It seems to me like they're just using this to just slow, slow everybody down, because you can build something, and they're saying plant establishment period, they can, and then what plants are they planting? I don't see them planting any plants, they're just weeds.
It is a huge contradiction, right? So, the first part of the application for a billboard is to declassify that portion as no longer being a landscape freeway portion, but yet they're still holding up the installation of a billboard there, although they approved the declassification, now they're holding us firm, holding firm on the 2027 date. So, it doesn't make any sense, we're pushing, we're pushing back on that for the benefit of not just the city's billboard program, but the private, the private sector billboard program, installations that are, that are queued up as a result of that.
All right, thank you. I'll second.
I have a question. So, does the city collect the mitigation fee from the design operator when the billboard's construction is done?
Ryan's done a really good job negotiating these mitigation measures, so I will let him address that.
Yes, they, on the commencement date, so basically, as soon as they begin operation of the billboard, not exactly the day it's constructed maybe, but when they actually turn it on, we would begin collecting that fee on an annual basis.
Thank you, and thank you for negotiating at a good rate.
Thank you, I have a motion made by Mayor Irwin, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. This is to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, to Approve an Extension of the Seven One Three Zero Fenwick Lane Electronic Billboard Project Entitlements and Direct the City Manager to Approve an Amendment to Section Two Point Four Mitigation Fee of Operating Agreement Number Zero One Dash Two Zero Two One and Finding That These Actions Are Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." I'll go on a call roll. District Three, Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
District Four, Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Irwin?
Yes.
Motion carried four zero.
Seven point one, request for a rate increase for the city contractor companies, and that's the TC ninety-three dash one oh four. And the recommendation is approved, the traffic commissioner's recommendation to increase the rate and charge for the tow companies. With that, I will move to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you, I have a motion made by Mayor Irwin, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. This is to approve the traffic commission's recommendation to increase the rates and charges for the tow companies participating in the Westminster Police Department's rotational tow program and adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Updating the Rates and Charges for the Tow Companies Participating in the Westminster Police Department's Rotational Tow Program." I'll go on a call roll. District Three, Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
Can I have a question about that?
Please.
So, we are about to approve the new rates. So, what is the new rate? What is the percentage that we're going to improve? What is the percentage, the difference, the increase?
It's on the page there.
As far as the percentage goes, we don't have the percentages listed on the package that you have, we have the dollar amounts listed in there. As you can see in the chart that we provided, the current rate, well, basically what we did was we contacted several different towing companies surrounding our department and throughout the county, including the CHP, as well as the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and we developed a, an average throughout the county based on the different fee amounts that we had obtained from the companies that did respond, and those are the numbers that we ended up coming up with. You might look at some of those numbers and think that, that most of them have essentially doubled, but keep in mind that these fees for these tow companies have not been increased in probably close to eleven years.
Okay, so basically, we, the current rate is one hundred and fifty dollars, and then we increase up to a hundred dollars more.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
So, I was in the middle of roll call, I have a yes from District Three, Councilmember Irwin, so District Four, Councilmember Irwin? Your vote, District Four?
Councilmember Irwin, number one.
Oh, yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Irwin?
Yes.
Motion carried four zero.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I will open up for auto communication concerning non-agenda items, so, Madam Clerk, who had then beat, instruction into record, please.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a yellow speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to, step up to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. First speaker we have is Denix McGraw, second speaker after that is Janet Viveros.
Hello, I was here last year, if you remember, I brought up some issues with Fry Park. I'd like to invite you personally down there to meet me, so I could show you how you felled our community on safety. It turned out, it's a drug addiction park right now. It's unsafe, it should be shut down, it should be tore down. When they built that park, they said they're gonna, the exception was they're gonna keep it up, they're gonna make sure that there's no crime or anything going on, that was a concern. It's time to tear it down, you're wasting money at Sigler Park, you're wasting at this food vending truck, this green scam deal you got going on down Hoover Street. Close it down, it's unsafe, someone's gonna get hurt, you're gonna wait till a kid gets raped, kidnapped, drug addiction, that's all it is. They should be arrested, they're not homeless, they're homeless, but they're breaking the law and they need to be arrested. As far as the Green Deal project you got going down Hoover, what kind of research did we do on that? Why didn't we build that down beside the railroad tracks? Why would you tear two lanes out of Hoover Street, especially around a school where it's dangerous? With the student, the community, or they're taking side streets now, down our residential area, shortcuts, speeding, never see a place over there, I know they're always over there on the south side of Westminster, but we didn't on the west side. Down Trask, I live off of Illinois Street, it's backed up during the school hours, people getting dropped off to school, this gentleman here said how much safer they are, they're not safer, it's more dangerous for the kids to go to school now than ever. I'm a sixty-two-year resident, I went to Schmidt, I went to Johnson, I went to Westminster High School. Right now, that street is backed up past Hoover, people are taking shortcuts, racing down Illinois Street, Olive and Iowa Street, thirty-five, forty, even the trucks that were working down there, those big semi-trucks, were passing cars on Illinois Street, unacceptable. It's dangerous now, what about the kids that are walking to school down Illinois Street, and you got cars going forty, forty-five miles an hour down our street? They're impatient, I would be too, it's a stupid idea to shut down one lane in front of a school, it's no reason for it, it's a waste of taxpayer money, I know you get a grant for it, but it's still a waste of taxpayer money to do that. Why didn't we do down the railroad tracks if it was that important to put a bike lane down there? Why would you tear up Hoover, cost you probably four times as much as it would have cost you to do it down the dirt area on the opposite side of the sidewalk? I live on Illinois Street, one three five eight-two, Illinois Street, there's a tree there, that's been there, overgrown, lifting the street, lifting the sidewalk, lifting my walkway, I called and they said the budget's used up for the year. It's a safety hazard, they ground off the sidewalk, they grind off the sidewalk, the walkways.
Thank you very much, time's up, your time's up.
You know, I waited three and a half hours to talk here, this is, I'm gonna start going to the internet, start making a big deal.
Please, thank you.
Can I say if?
Can we, can we wait until the?
Let me just, just real, I just wanna express that I have your frustrations as well, I live pretty close to Frank Frye Park, I can guarantee our PD expresses their frustration as well, they, they're probably tired of me calling them all the time, they go out there, they go out there pretty regularly, and they can only do what they can legally, and we're, we just, we just passed our anti-campion ordinance, which soon will be, our PD will be enforcing that, and we also are gonna have a park ranger program, hopefully by the summertime, where those park rangers are gonna be strictly patrolling parks. So, help is on the way, I understand your frustration, I'm frustrated, I've witnessed your neighbors, my neighbors.
They're breaking the law.
They are, they are, they are, they are.
I'm worried about drugs, we got kids that go to the mall.
I, I'm very.
The city doesn't care about our children?
No, I do, I live right there, I live, I live a block away.
Vice Mayor Monzo, I think that we are not going to get into discussion here.
Thank you.
So, I recommend that, I know that you're looking at me, you know, I'm more than happy to, to go with you, to go with you over there to look at that, but I think that this is, hold on, please, but I think this is in District Two, and Vice Mayor Carlos is going.
I'll meet with you.
More than happy to meet with you and discuss more about that.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right.
Next speaker is Janet Viveros, followed by Jason Doan.
Good evening, once again, I'd like to express that I appreciate the council for recognizing and awarding a small local business in the city, small local businesses in the city. Congratulations to those businesses who received the recognition tonight. As a person who is part of a thirty-two-year family tire shop, I take these type of recognitions close to the heart. Westminster is a city cultivated by several small businesses, we have delicious Vietnamese cuisine restaurants, inviting Hispanic market stores, high-quality and affordable beauty parlors, charming corner flower stores, trusted mechanic shops, and the list can go on. Each small and local business courageously confronted their uncertainties and took a bold leap transforming their vision into a thriving business and turning challenges into opportunities. Many would refer to that as the American dream, and that, and they chase, and they chose to do that here, in the city of Westminster. Most of these small businesses, business owners have stayed loyal to the city, they contribute significantly to the local economy, they add richness to the community, they support our local students in schools, and they build trust with other city residents. As I once read, when you shop small businesses, you're not helping to build, to buy another penthouse, you're helping a little girl get ballet lessons, a little boy get his jersey, and the mom or dad put food on their table. During a time that Westminster City is about to experience significant new developments and changes, please don't forget to continue supporting your local small businesses, thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Doan, followed by Terry Rains.
Yeah, I have a lot of things in my mind, you know, that's a tremendous, serious civil rights violation to the American citizen, and I think law enforcement are not doing their jobs, and they threaten arrest all the time, and they violate your civil rights so many, often too many times, I report the crimes that caused, that, that happened to me, like, for example, working for Postmates earning, I earn money, and then I send all the report of the crime that committed to me, it's an app crime, Charlie, you gotta be responsible for the law enforcement, they are not doing their job, they, they are not serious about their job, and, and I kept the number of the guy that stole my money through the apps, he pretended to be like the manager of the Postmate, and they called me, and then they, you know, they withdraw money, because he sounds so convincing, so I give the number, but the cops, the older cops, senior cops, he's not doing his job. And then also Bitcoin, I got scammed online, because there are a lot of people that I network with, and I make a lot of money. And then, so, by the time I want to withdraw money, I couldn't withdraw them, then they tell me to pay more money into it, and the system, they knew about it, law enforcement knew about it, FBI knew about it, they block you. And then, so I report the problem to the cops about the Bitcoin ATM machine, one of the transactions I made down in Fadden and, what is it, Beach Boulevard, at the liquor store, and the money's gone. And then, so, I told them about the money got stuck in there, they say, oh, just go through the apps and find out, at the Huntington Beach, Huntington Beach Law Enforcement. You know, other crimes also, there's too many crimes that they're not solving, and not only that, they use AI to track you, and they block just everything I do, I'm trying to find the attorney to represent my case, I'm trying to serve the paperwork to serve to the defendants, but the sheriff, they told me fill it down, have the sheriff help you. So I went down Santa Ana, and they, they told me to fill this form, and after I filled them, and I bring them back, and they said, oh, sorry, these are not the right forms. And I got the person that stole my money, and then they don't do anything about it, and they, in fact, they know about it, who really stole your money? You know, the Hong Kong bank that had money that I was making investment in cryptocurrency, she made a lot of money for me, but subsequent payment that I made, they took it, the Chinese took it, and the Vietnamese government also back there, the military bank, and there are many other cases, also the Walmart, e-commerce website, they steal money, and I told them to look into it, they know about it, law enforcement know about it, they all know about it, because they check, every single one of them, even women here, they all know about it, you know? And yesterday, I talking to, I found a new lawyer, she's a Spanish-American, you know, for twenty years, they accused me of VC sympathizer, you know that, and Charlie, okay? I'm not, but I read a book on William Duker, he's an American, he wrote a book about the history of Ho Chi Minh, and then they, they use that, and also my occupation, September eleven, I worked on the transceiver, they blew up September eleven, they blame it on me too, you know, there's such a major conspiracy in Iran, Iraq, you know, you know, it's all me, it's all me, but I need them.
Your time is up, thank you very much.
Yeah, I need help, okay, I need help, everywhere I go, I'm.
Thank you, your time is up, thank you.
But I need help, okay? I need a Vietnamese community help.
Have a seat, please.
Our next speaker is Terry Rains, followed by Catherine D.
Hello, court updates, the April fifteenth settlement conference for Amy's criminal bribery case was continued to July first at eight thirty AM in Department W fourteen. Both sides think they'll be able to hash it out by then, hell no to any deal for the little narcissistic twat waffle. Prosecute this case to the fullest extent of law, our officers deserve justice. Last month, the court rejected former employee Vicki Morgan's demure, a small win for the city in a case against her. The case management conference was continued to May twenty-ninth at one thirty PM in Department W fifteen. On April seventeen, loser candidate and perpetrator of the fake news mobile home park eviction notices Joseph No filed an amended complaint in his federal civil rights lawsuit against the city mayor, Irwin, and chief Laney. Just yesterday, the city filed a proposed order to dismiss the case, but the chief wasn't named in the motion, it just says, upon consideration of defendants, City of Westminster, Charlie Chi-Win, motion to dismiss, blah, 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 but he is named in the order of detail. All this crap over a friggin' mirror, Charlie. In the city's case against Amy and Nam Quan, the May sixth case management conference was continued to July twenty-second at two PM in Department C twenty-five. Amy's motion to strike will also be heard on that day. On April twenty-first, Amy posted non-refundable jury fees of a hundred and fifty dollars. On April ninth, the city requested a default judgment against Nam Quan due to his failure to file an answer or respond to numerous inquiries. Terms of that proposed judgment are, one, the city's complaint for declaratory, never say, an injunctive relief is granted against Nam Quan only. Two, judgment is entered in favor of the city against Nam Quan only. Three, declaratory relief is granted as follows, A, the ability of the mayor to control the debate at council meetings by determining who has the floor to speak, and to enforce the time limit policy are valid and enforceable regulations pursuant to Government Codes Section three sixty-eight thirteen and five forty-nine fifty-seven ninety-five. B, Nam Quan is not allowed to speak at council meetings when the mayor determines he does not have the floor, and he may be lawfully removed from council meetings for doing so. Four, Nam Quan is permanently enjoined from speaking at the council meeting when he has not been recognized as having the floor by the mayor after the mayor issues a request or warning that he respect the rights to speak. or warning that he respect the rights to speak of those who do have the floor. Five, city is the prevailing party. Six, city is awarding its cost in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. That last one is BS. If the city has declared the prevailing party against Nam Quan, then he should be ordered to pay one-half of the city's legal cost through the date of the default judgment that it's, when it's entered. More like twenty-five thousand, not two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Last year, Christian Bettenhausen said, quote, "Whenever something happens, when someone raises a concern about a council member, it should be handled by someone else because my opinion," his opinion, "could be biased." And so that's not, that's not, that's appropriate. That's how he read it. End quote. Yet Christian threw Jones a mayor, framed this case and hired the firm to represent the city. Same BS for the Liberty Park case. So you know what? Let's get this ball rolling on the city attorney RFP, Christine. Thank you so much.
Our final speaker is Catherine D.
Are you, are you translating?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
She's not the best citizen or listener, but she have not job.
No, no, don't, you, you, if you are not translating, I ask you to go back to your seat, please. If you are not the translator, please go back to your seat. So let her present. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, everywhere I walk, they try to damage me because I'm from north. So Vietnamese cheat me very bad in manufacture, so that's why I must change the job all the time. They make stop when I walk, they try to make it, a paper stop, so they try to damage me, to make me losing job. Everywhere. And the last job, the Mexican, the Vietnamese told the Mexican, you know, when I do QI xi job with the tablet, you know, they come and they fix make it. And they say, okay, tell me how we do it. In, in my last job, that's why I losing job. So I just want to know that everywhere I go, people cheat me bad because I'm from north, you know? And I'm, I came here like two thousand seven, so. And my last job, they make paper and they make everything and they make trouble and then the supervisor get angry and they kick me out, you know? So it happened all the time because north and south like fifty, fifty year already. Yeah. So that's, I lost a lot of job because they tried to damage me and they, they did a lot of bad thing behind me, you know, Vietnamese. And they told the Mexican did, did it, steal my note, you know, notebook and stuff like that. So that's why I lost my job, you know, a lot of time they did it to me. Uh, so right now, because I lost a job, so I behind the rent like three month and I'm in big trouble now, you know? So I am in big trouble now because I lost a job and then I in, you know, difficult time. I don't know what to say. You know, in manufacturer, people really bad, you know, so they did a lot of thing and I want to sue them, but I don't know how to prove it, you know? Yeah.
So, can we?
I lost a job and I, I behind the rent, you know?
Hold on, hold on, please, please, don't. Go ahead, continue.
That's why I lost a job, you know, everywhere they did it, they, they mix stuff, they, they make paper, they damage me and then I lost a job, so I lost not only one time, many time, you know? And then they did it, so that's why I behind the rent now. I owe a lot of money, I have trouble because they always do bad thing to me, you know? So I don't know what to say, you know, because the way I walk, no camera. So last job in a big bad, the Vietnamese told the Mexican girl and when I walk the paper, they make my paper and they, and she say, okay, tell me what you do now. And they laughing. And when I do the, you know, the, I do, I, I'm, uh, I'm like QI xi, right? When I testing the tablet, you know, the, the pill and she come and she damaged it and she, she laughing. And nobody hate me because they all together, like team up together, you know?
Your, your time is up. Is he the last?
Yes, there's no other speakers.
I have a question for you. Do you have children at all? Are you, are you living in the city of Westminster?
Um, before Westminster, but I rent now in Midway City. Yeah, I just moving.
You have any kids?
I have my son, but because he, he saw me not stable, so he moving out with his friend.
I, I refer that you to, um, Family Resource Center and see if they can help you with anything?
I behind the rent three month.
Well, at this point here, we are not going to solve anything and so stop, we'll, we'll probably.
Yeah, yeah, we, um, we'll, we'll get some information from you to try to figure out, um, you know, it, Midway City is, it's not our jurisdiction, but we have some resources that we can refer you to. But I have stuff, talk to you if you don't mind hanging out for a little bit. Yes, okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, at this time, I will close the oral communication for non-encounter items, but I do have a few comments. First of all, I, I want to let everyone knows that we, as a council member, you know, on the, we listen to you and we appreciate that you come out and, you know, express your opinions and, and, you know, and relay, uh, your message, uh, as far as, you know, the safety and everything that going on in the city. We hear you, but at the same time, uh, I ask for your understanding. I have a job, I have, you know, a duty, duty that I have to perform here. We have a policy that we have to keep the term and everyone is the same thing. If you go over, I will stop you. I, I, and that is something that I will keep consistent on that. And, um, I just want to, to mention that, you know, we appreciate that you're coming out for that. So at this time here, I don't know that any one of you have anything to conclude for the oral communication. If not, then we move on to the next item. The next item is nine point one, continue from the April ninth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, request to establish a TED foundation. First of all, I would, uh, want to thank you that, uh, council and staff bring back this item and, uh, you know, I appreciate that, um, number of people come out and, and expressed this, uh, at the last meeting. And so first, I want to thank everyone for expressing your concerns at the last meeting. It became very clear to me that there are differences of opinion as to whether to hold a TED parade due to the cost and the differences of opinions as to how the parade is funded. When I first brought up this item to consider for the new TED parade, um, my priority, my priority was to simply to find a more focused way to raise fund and also create a, a way for those who have a passion for the TED activities to participate in a different but meaningful way. I also wanted to listen to input and address and concern of the council regarding a new foundation. So I appreciate the council's willingness to bring this item back to discuss further the importance of the TED parade and having the means to raise fund, having a means to raise fund. And that is the main point that we want to take about, to talk about and what the new TED foundation could look like. We need to discuss further on that if you have any questions. In my mind, I envision a much smaller foundation board, no seed money required by the city. I don't intend to ask for seed money. Hopefully that we, we will start out and then make the money and then take over the, the cost. So, um, there's no seed money required by city and very minimal startup cost in terms of staff time and filling or legal cost. Once established, the board shall meet, shall meet independently and work independently as a self-sustaining foundation. These are just my thoughts, but it is important to me for the rest of the council to provide input about the board and bylaws. The Voice of OC published an article today that talks about the TED parade costs and issues with the Westminster Community Foundation. The article highlights the importance of the parade, but also stresses that the parade could not happen without funding. While I appreciate the WCF's efforts, a TED foundation would have one mission and one mission only, a very big and important mission, to raise fund for the TED parade. We want to minimize the use of public fund for that. Which include outreach to the business and potential donors and planning events related to fundraising. This will ensure we can continue this very important cultural event. I know that some of you, I, I know that Vice Mayor Menso, last time also mentioned that we are not going to do away with the TED parade and its meaning and its pride for the city of Westminster. Basically, it put the city of Westminster on the map. And we are very, very proud of that. It's his biggest event for the city. So I encourage you look into that and make sure that we are doing what we can to raise fund for this TED parade every year. With that, I will hear from the council. And at this time, I would like to open up for, uh, council comments.
I think the, uh, this is, this is my take on it. The W, uh, Westminster, the Westminster Foundation in its first year was successful in raising money and donated, what, forty thousand to the parade? And that was because of the mayor, uh, had, had a hand in it with, uh, bringing guests to the gala. And John Gentile, Gentile was, had the courage to, uh, gave the mayor the credit. Last year, the foundation donated nothing because they couldn't even, uh, plan the event or establish the, the event. So that tells me that somehow, whatever happens with all the board member turnover and all the chaos that happened, they, they weren't successful. So I don't have the confidence that they're gonna be successful this year to raise any funds. To me, we need to establish this new foundation with a very focused purpose, a singular purpose of raising fund for the parade. I don't trust that the Westminster Foundation is gonna have the, the know-how or the, the means or, or the leadership to do anything this year. I, I just have a lack, a very lack of confidence that they're gonna do anything. So I'm for, uh, this new foundation exclusively to raise fund for the parade. That's, that's just my comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor Menso.
Here's my, my take on it. You know, I've been dancing with this subject in mind for, you know, since, since the last meeting. Here's, here's, here's what it is. Like I said before, the TED parade is not going anywhere. Uh, it's, it's a highlight of our city event. There's cities, all neighboring cities, they're like this and their residents come to our city on that day to be part of that event. It's covered by all the, a lot of major, the news outlets. Um, it's a, it's a big deal. So, and like I mentioned before, the, the demographics of our community is what, why we have that. Just like many other cities around our nation, they have whatever the highest demographic is in that community, that's usually what they celebrate. Um, so here's, you know, we have a large Vietnamese-American community, so we celebrate the TED parade here and it's a, it's a big deal. So, um, and I, I wanna speak about the residents' concerns about the, their concerns about using, you know, our general fund money, taxpayer money, uh, to put this TED parade together, you know, cost money. Um, in the past, when it was privately run, it wasn't, there was a lot of, lot of negatives about it. It was, uh, political, it was divisive. And these last three years, I want to say, city manager, three years, it's, it's, it's totally changed where everybody looks forward to it. It's, it's unifies the community, it brings everybody together. But I, I understand that the use of our taxpayer money considering the financial situation that our city's in. Uh, you know, people, people have negative comments because of that, because of our financial situation. I understand that. So I do not see anything wrong with, um, if the mayor feels confident that this TED, uh, TED foundation is strictly only for TED parade, we can raise all, if not the majority of the funds for the TED parade and it doesn't cost our city any taxpayer money, I don't see that, I don't see that to be a negative. If that's the case, then if we accomplish that, I think that's a win-win. And the only, the way that I would agree to this is, as the mention, mayor already mentioned, we do no, uh, and the Westminster Community Foundation, we, uh, they asked for a seed money to put a gala together. So I would say no seed money. And then I would say that whatever cost, staff cost, you know, with our legal cost that, that this, uh, foundation reimbursed all the costs back to the city. So where there is no city funds being used, uh, for this foundation. And, and if that's the case, then I think I would address the concerns of the community and, and also, you know, having in, in a, have a vehicle to where we can generate, raise these monies for the TED parade. So, um, if that's the case, then I would agree to it that way. And if the mayor agrees to it, then, then we'll move forward. So that's what I got.
All right. Anything else from a council member? Anything?
I think I'm going to give it a shot. Thank you.
I think that there is, um, establish, uh, the TED foundation is not only that we create it and then let it run by itself and, and, you know, don't worry about it and whatever it is, you know, whatever they can, uh, whether we, they are going to use it for the TED parade or to raise fund or not, then that's not the purpose. The purpose is to create, uh, the TED parade foundation so that we can do fundraising and get the tax dollars, uh, you know, direct from, from their, uh, the nonprofit organization. And the reason I said that is because there are a number of people who want to donate it to the TED foundation. As you can see that previous years, the number of years before, uh, they raise fund and because they have nonprofit organization, they can raise a lot of money for the TED parade. And so I, I would assume that with nonprofit organization for the TED foundation, we can, uh, raise fund, uh, for the TED, for the, uh, TED parade. But at the same time, there must be people are responsible for it, you know? And so with that, I, I would, I would think that, um, the council is also responsible for it too. Even though that we have, um, it will be independent, uh, but at the same time, I would suggest if, um, the council agreed that the mayor and the vice mayor is to be included and then each council will appoint one person into the, uh, the board. So we have, the board will be five members, um, so that we can, you know, whoever, whoever the mayor or the, the vice mayor are very much responsible for this every year. So that's, that's, that's what I, I want to propose. And at the same time, you know, we were stated, hopefully that we can, uh, you know, negotiate or, or make deals so that we can, uh, you know, raise fund without getting the seed money from the city and so we can. And so we can use the cost to offset, you know, to pay for it. And then the profit that we have is to go into the TED Parade funding. So with that, I, I don't know what you have, anything else, but I'm going to approve.
So, so we're going to have a five-member board. The mayor's proposal is a five-member board with no seed money and, and also reimburse the city for all costs, startup costs, you know, staff and legal. And five-member board with mayor and vice mayor as board members? Is that what it is?
Well, for the startup cost, I think that this is for the city, so I, but you know, if, I can, I can go for that, but you know, it's also going to take out after, let's say next year, we raise funds, forty thousand dollars. Well, the startup cost is five thousand dollars, right? The five thousand is going to go to that. You know, so it's, you know, either way, we are going to take the money out of the fundraising.
Yeah, but I'm saying there's no, the timeline to, for reimbursement can be, doesn't have to be right away, it can be, you know, down the road.
But if, you know, I want to make sure it's clear that if there is any reimbursement for the start cost, which is, you know, to form the foundation, let's say to form the foundation costs five thousand dollars. And if the city council expects to refund that money, I don't think it's fair, but it doesn't matter. To be honest with you, it doesn't matter. But I want to make sure that the funding, that, the dollars that we can raise from the fundraising, that dollar is going to be offset or pay back to the, I'm not going to get money out of my pocket to pay for it, right?
No, it comes from the foundation.
It's coming from the foundation. So that's why I want to make sure that whatever the startup cost is came out of, it will come out of the fundraising.
Yes, yes, correct, yeah.
Is that okay? Okay.
Yeah, so right, yeah, so right now we have, let's see, it was no seed money, whatever the staff or legal costs are for, for this foundation, the foundation would reimburse the city, and whatever that timeline looks like, you can decide on that. And then you have a five, whoa, you have a five.
Your time's up.
Right, my time's up. We have a five-member board, so each council member will appoint one member, and then the vice mayor, mayor also sit as board member. So it's essentially a total of seven. Five and two?
No, five, no, no.
Five total?
Five total, right. So each council left, and then with the two.
Oh, okay. So you're not, so the mayor and vice mayor are not appointing people?
No, that what? I don't know.
I guess it's up to you.
I'm open up for comments.
That, that's, I don't know, to me is, either way is the same.
That's up, yeah, that's really up to you.
Yeah. I, I'm fine, either way, so.
So one alternative would be that you could say that you have a total of five people who are on the board, and each council member appoints one person, and the mayor and the vice mayor have the option to appoint either themselves or somebody else?
My, okay, a second thought on that. I'd rather have each council, including the mayor and vice mayor, to appoint one, so there will be five, plus the mayor and the vice mayor, which the total, can just have seven people on the board. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that's acceptable. You can have five plus the two for a total of seven.
Whatever you think.
Okay, yeah. There's a motion, is there a second to that?
You can?
Give me the motion?
Yeah. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, but what are we calling the foundation? I would like to change the name.
We're definitely not calling it the WTF.
We are changing for that, okay? We are changing for that.
So I think, I think what the motion could be.
TFW.
Right, exactly. We could call it the, we can brainstorm names, Westminster Community TED Foundation, something like that. Anyway, so I think what I've heard was that staff could return with bylaw. Do you want us to return draft bylaws for approval? Articles of incorporation, we could return that at a future meeting, and then once that's approved, then we would file it with the state.
Yes.
In the meantime, we can also bring some ideas for what this foundation could be called at the next meeting as well.
Well, I want to proceed it as soon as possible. I believe that the city attorney have the name for it, you know, you want to reverse it.
So we can certainly have that be part of the documents that we would bring back, and if, you know, we can prepare names, you know, that's ultimately your choice.
Okay. Appreciate that. Okay, motion and second under four.
Okay. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by District Three, Councilmember Winn. This is to establish a foundation of a seven-member board. Each council member may appoint one person, with the mayor and vice mayor serving on the foundation board. No seed money will be provided from the city. Reimbursement to the city for all startup costs on establishing the foundation at a timeline to be determined. Direct staff to return with draft bylaws and articles of incorporation for the foundation, and to also bring some names for the naming conventions of this establishment.
All right.
I'll go to call roll. District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District Four, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried four zero.
Nine point two discussion, discussion regarding the Westminster Community Foundation. I want to open up for council comments.
I guess I can go first. You know, when this thing was first brought to us at, you know, it had some positives, like it could be a good thing if it's done right, but, you know, that didn't work out. But I think there is, there is a use for it, there is a need for it, you know? Now that this, the TED Parade funding is going to be done by another organization, I think that this foundation, the Westminster Community Foundation can do good if needed, you know? They can concentrate on other community services, you know, scholarships, you know? There's a lot of senior programs, children programs, you know? I just think that, you know, maybe, maybe it was just too large of a group. I think it needs to be completely autonomous for this, from the city, and they can just be their own standing, own organization. I think they would, they can do some good if you get the right board members on there that have some experience and, and they have a, you know, passion for serving the community, it can be good. I think we should not kill it and maybe give it another shot and see, see if it succeeds. I think you need, we need to reduce the members and city attorney, I think, I think the best way to do it, according to your report, is that the city council does have the, according to the bylaws, we do have the authority to change the bylaws. There's two options, have the, appoint and then have them, have the board change it, or we as a council can change it.
So it does require both to agree? So right now, you, you have two people that have been appointed to the board that do not have expired terms. You have two people that are on the board that have expired terms, and then you have a vacant position. So if you want it, so if the desire is to have, to change the rules to be only five, then you could appoint to fill those positions. We don't, I realize appointment's not on today's agenda, but that would be an option. If you want us, if the desire is to have five, then we could certainly bring back an item for appointments so that you can complete that, or the existing community, or we could vote on that now to direct staff to begin the process to get to that point? I don't know if that made, made sense. I realize I'm speaking in circles here. I don't know if that answered your question.
So we, the council itself cannot change the bylaws?
Correct. So you would need the board to also agree to change the bylaws?
We just need a quorum, a quorum of eleven, what's?
All right. So the short version is that we need an absolute minimum, you need to have three people on the board. What was stated in the staff report was incorrect, that there are four people that are on the board, technically, but two of them have expired terms, but because they had, they did not resign, they're still on the board. So the, the easiest way to solve this long-term, if the goal is to have only five, my recommendation would be that you appoint to complete, to get the five people that you want to be on the board long-term. Once that is accomplished, then you have proposed bylaws, and then both groups would vote on those bylaws, and then proceed from there. So the bylaws would say, we only have five.
And then I would also propose that the bylaws state that after the initial appointment by the council, that they hold their own elections or however they do it, where the council is autonomous from it. That's what I would suggest.
So that would require an amendment of the Articles of Incorporation, which is certainly within your purview. Again, that would, that's something that only you can do, that they cannot do that by themselves, the board. So if that's the direction to change it, so that, so often, community foundation, foundations, they're not controlled in any way by the city council. If that's the desire, that would require changing the Articles of Incorporation as well.
That's my suggestion. I mean, I think that would give it the best shot of success. And that's my opinion.
To me, I think that is more complicated than, than what we are discussing here. I would, I would think that we should have, create the two members, what is it, the, what we call? The ad hoc committee, so that we can, you know, those two people working with the city attorney and staff, and then bring it back to the council for discussion. And, you know, if you don't mind, and I would, I would appoint Vice Mayor Menzo and Councilmember Mockwin to be on that ad hoc committee.
You can? I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's going to take further discussion, I guess, there's nothing wrong with that, I guess.
So if that, so I guess what might be helpful to do a straw poll to get a general sense of if that's the general, as much direction as we could get, if there is consensus, then I think that might help the ad hoc committee make determinations. And if the desire is to, for example, amend the bylaws, then we can get a general sense of what that might be, so that maybe I can work with the ad hoc members, so that I can draft bylaws that they think would be agreeable to the group.
That's, that's my main purpose, to have the ad hoc committees to work with you and staff, and then, and then bring back to, for the council to look at whatever it is.
What about the, the remaining council members, are they, what's their opinion on the number of board members and what I mentioned earlier? Or what's, because the city attorney is asking for kind of a consensus?
I would like to reduce the number of board member down to max seven, five, five or seven on that board. So city attorney, so what you're saying is that we have to, the council has to appoint three new board members so that the foundation has a quorum?
So, well.
At least.
So what I stated in the staff report is different than what I'm telling you, because I made a mistake in that staff report. So it is not mandatory that you appoint somebody, but that would be my recommendation, that you appoint, if the desire is to have five, the most straightforward way of doing that is to appoint the five that you want to have on the board, then those five will hopefully agree with the recommendations from the city council of, here, we are recommending that the bylaws be revised in this manner, and then we ask those five to vote on the proposed bylaws, and hopefully they would agree. I think that's the most straightforward manner.
I have a question for staff. The time that we established the WCF, do we set time frame for it, or two years? I believe there is two years for the members to be on board, right?
So, yes, so there's, each one has a two-year term?
So I think it's two years already, right?
Correct. The issue is that.
So basically, they are out?
Not automatically, because they're out when there's a replacement for appointment. The reason there's so many vacancies is that they resigned, which is different than appointing somebody to fill that, the position after the two years is up.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had a two-year position and they had a four-year position. So that's why the, and the ones that are remaining are the ones who had a two, is it, the ones that remain are the ones that had a two or a four?
The time is almost ten o'clock. I would like to move to extend the meeting time, if there's a second to that.
A second?
All right. Pukon, please.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, to extend the meeting past ten PM per city policy. I'll go to call roll. District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District Four, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried four zero.
All right. Let's continue to discuss on that.
So what I've heard is there's a desire for five members? And is that correct? I'm getting nods from two, yes?
That's what my proposal was.
Okay. And then the second question would be, is there a desire to, that the city council would ultimately stop appointing membership? Rather, it would be independent of the city council in every way? Once they're aboard, then they've, ship has sailed, they appoint their own membership, they control their own destiny? Or do, right now, we have the authority, the city council is continuing to appoint? Do you wish to continue to have that, or would we wish to change the rules? In which case, that's going to dictate what I end up drafting.
City Attorney, I'm trying to understand, I know that you're trying to get the consensus from the council here, but my point is to have the ad hoc committee to work on it and then bring it back. So whatever they decide, five, seven, you know, whatever they decide, at the time that they bring it back, we can all get our input in that. By that time, they, they should have the explanation for, for the, for us to, you know, to decide.
Okay.
So I don't think that we need to be.
You don't need to decide now, understood.
If you have to do it right now, then you are tying up the ad hoc committee's members, they can't discuss further on what they want to do. Okay. So just simple as, you know, creating an ad hoc committee and let them work on it.
Do I have a second? Ooh, loud.
I believe.
Did I have a second? I'm sorry, I only have a motion made by mayor.
Second. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, I have a second.
District Three, thank you. Okay. I have a motion made by Mayor Winn, seconded by District Three, Councilmember Winn. This is to create an ad hoc committee made up of Vice Mayor Monzo and District Three Councilmember Winn, to work with our city attorney and staff to draft a bylaw amendment and bring recommendations back to the city council. I'll go to call roll. District Three, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
District Four, Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Winn.
Yes.
Motion carried four zero.
All right. Well, we are at the comments and requests for agenda items from city council and agency members, including AB 1234, report when required. Let's go with Councilmember Mockwin for my last. Yes, commence.
I just want to thank you city staff, the police department, the CFA, for organizing the Black Friday ceremony. It was a very good turnout. The community was, had a lot of positive feedback from the community. of positive feedback from the community, those in attendance and those who watch on YouTube and the channel, they, they were very happy. It was very, it was a very good turnout. Just thank you staff for the presentation on the CD, CDBG and for the great work on the budget. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember McWynn. And next is Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, when the chief, um, talking about the, the stats of the, the criminal rate is going down, I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you for working tirelessly to keep the city safe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen. Next is Vice Mayor Menzo, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to start off with, you know, in recognition of National Police Week. I want to make, thank all our chief, all our guys out there and the PD and thank them for keeping us safe and working hard and, you know, our deputy police chief, hopefully he can tell me what the score was on the, we're good? All right, we're good. Thank you very much for what you guys do. I appreciate it. Also for our fire department. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Yes, Black Friday staff, thank you. You guys, Vanessa again, did an awesome job again, going above and beyond. Our MCs did a great job too. With our city manager and our Jake Noah, thank him too. And then Mother's Day, I hope all the moms out there had a great Mother's Day. And then I want to just say, I hope we were going to have our next meeting, I believe is canceled, so we won't see you guys. So we can see you for Memorial Day. Hopefully, the community comes out to our memorial park and we have a, every year they have a Memorial Day ceremony. They put on a good show and a good remembrance and honoring our, our fallen, our sacrifice for our country. So please come out on Memorial Day. And staff, thank you. City attorney, great job. Looking pretty good. Thank you very much, council. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Menzo. Next, me, for me to, first of all, I want to thank you all for being here. I know that some of you were here at the same time as we are, we were, which is at 4:00 today and it's been six hours already. I'm tired. I am very tired. I know that you are very tired too. So I want to thank you for taking your time to be here. I want to thank staff for the great work that you, you've been, you know, the, all the effort that you put in, especially for the number of events that we just completed. One is the American Vietnam Vietnamese Veteran Day. It was a successful event. And the next event happened the same, same place, you know, just a few weeks after that, which is a Black April 30th. It was phenomenally, you know, done. And I, we have a lot of positive feedback from that. And I know that I still remember the day that, before the event, that Director Vanessa Johnson and Public Manager Tony Farm, Ling Dawn and myself, and we were out there, you know, discussing, this is the first year that we have to go out there and then, and, you know, and plan for the event. Normally, we know that, you know, the, the area by heart already, we don't have to, but they took the times and looked into the details and it was very well set up. And, you know, and we have, this year, we all have, also have a lot of elected officials from different cities attended the event. I'm sure that next year, there will be more because I, I got feedback from, from, from people that I met at the OCFA and, you know, on that day, I do have the, the meeting, but some of the OCFA members, like including Supervisor Janet Wayne and, and Councilmember Becerra and, and, you know, number of these people attended the event, they actually rushed back at the OCFA for the, the meeting and they mentioned about the event at that meeting. So it was so nice that, that they conveyed a message for us. So once again, thank you, Public Works. Thank you, Community Recreation. And thank you PDs and every one of you, including the city managers and, and assistant city managers. Also, I, I think that the council members also did very well on that day representing the city and presenting your speech. Next is, I want to report that I was at the Business Level Up Grant Program today. I was there to welcome other awardees, which they have to go through the, the certain, the four trainings, two hours training each, in order for them to receive the, the grant money, which is $5,000. And these are the people who got selected out of 36, 19 out of 36. So they, they actually won the lottery to have the, and they, they were very, very pleased to, you know, to have the city working with the, with the SB, SBDC to partnership with them and get these, and then put the number one priority on this. And they, they see that we are actually, you know, caring about the small business in the city of Westminster. Next is, I would like to report about the SCAC. I know that we, we were talking about SCAC today, about the, the projects that we are, there are a number of things that I want to share with, I, I will get together with staff because we, I want to present some of the ideas so that we can, we may be recognized at the SCAC of next year if we were to have the, the meeting. But we need to put that in, in order for them to recognize it or, you know, we have to compete with other cities. We have an idea, but I haven't got a chance to talk to the staff yet. But we do, we do have the opportunities, you know, and with all the, the projects that we just recently go, went through, the Fall Festival and, you know, that's another success event, successful event that we have. Also, I attended the city leaders summit. I reported about it a little bit, you know, with, with all the city leaders and we, we actually met with the legislators of different cities so that we can present, you know, our concern. And basically, these are the city leaders and most of them are mayors or city councils. So we actually conveyed a message to them, hopefully that they, they, you know, they take that into their heart. Because we actually met there with them face to face and discussed about the, the item. And once, also that the, at the seminar or the, the conference, we have a chance to meet with a lot of others' city leaders so we can exchange ideas. I don't have time to, to, to go over everything right now, but just want to make sure that you understand the time that we, that I was there is well spent. And, and I would like to thank for the opportunity to, to go there and continue to work for the city. With that, I want to.
Yes.
Okay. I will end it right here, but Councilmember McWynn have something else too.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I forgot to mention to all of you here and to the residents of Midway City and Westminster, this coming Saturday at Westminster Mall, behind the mall, in front of JCPenney, Midway City Sanitary District, we have the compost giveaway, paper shredding and e-waste event. It starts at 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And basically, you can drive your car and get in line and you can receive two bags of compost for free. You can bring up to five boxes of sensitive documents for shredding for free. And then you can bring, you know, e-waste like monitors, computers, printers. Just don't print, don't bring the, the printer, the ink because it will leak. But everything else you, you can bring to us. And it's very well organized. You don't even need to get out of your car. You just get in line with your cars. It's like a drive-through and then you open your trunk and then we'll put in two bags of compost for you for free. So this Fri, this Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11, to 11:00 AM at the Westminster Mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask something?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report some of my trip up to Sacramento, the city leaders summit. Basically, the trip is, we just have a, a chance to update our knowledge about a new, new policy, new rules, new laws. And I am also glad that we get together with other city leaders to, to rally for, to put more pressure on the state lawmakers and Governor, Governor Newsom to take more action to help cities in fighting for, for criminal and to help the city with, with homelessness. So that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's important for, for us to report once we attend those meetings or conferences. I want to thank Councilmember McWynn, mentioned about the compost event, which is this Saturday. We are not fighting with Public Works. You can go to the compost event and then go back to the Public Works at the Carbonation Yard for, for the open house. So once again, you are invited. Please mention it to your neighbors, your family members, just to come out to support Public Works. And also at the same time, if you want, you can also attend the, you can come to the compost event. With that, I would like to adjourn the meeting today. It's, the time now is 10:15. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for being here.